Good evening, everybody. This is zoning board of adjustments, regular meeting. Matt, could we have an opening statement?
I hereby declare this meeting of the Howell Township Zoning Board to be open, adequate notice having been given pursuant to the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act in the following manner. First, on January 2nd, 2025, a copy of said notice was emailed to the Asbury Park Press and the Star Ledger. Second, on January 2nd, 2025, a copy of said notice was hand-delivered to the clerk of the township of Howell. Third, on January 2nd, 2025, said notice was posted in the office of the zoning board and on the bulletin board in the Howell Township Municipal Building, 4567 Route 9, Howell Township, New Jersey. In accordance with Fire Prevention Code and your safety, please be advised that the facility is designed with two emergency exits at the front and rear of the meeting room. Furthermore, smoking is not permitted in the municipal building. Please take note that this meeting is being videotaped for possible future broadcast on Howell Township TV 77. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Could we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Barillo?
He is excused tonight.
Excused. Mr. Cantor?
Present.
Mr. Hughes?
Here.
Mr. O'Donnell?
He's excused as well.
Mr. Roscoe?
Here.
Mr. Ryan?
Present.
Ms. Scottson?
Here.
Mr. Cabrakis?
Here.
And Chairman Mertens?
Here.
Could everybody rise for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the visible, deliberate, and justice for all.
Good evening, Kelly. Could you swear in our professionals, please?
Raise your right hand, please. Do you swear from the testimony about to give in this matter's the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
State your name for the record, please.
Charles Conliffe.
Jennifer Beam.
They're sworn.
Thank you. Approval of minutes?
I don't mean it. Minutes for tonight.
Correspondents?
Just a couple exhibits were added to a couple cases, but we'll get to those as the cases come up, nothing else.
Sounds good. Okay, next one is resolution, case number BA-19-15A, Squonkum Fire Company, number one, resolution granting use variance in minor site plan. Eligible voters Barillo, Hughes, O'Donnell, Roscoe, Ryan, Scottson, and Mertens. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
You have a second. Roll call.
Mr. Barillo? Excused. Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell? Excused. Mr. Roscoe?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Ms. Scottson?
Yes.
Chairman Mertens?
Yes. Thank you. Real quick to everybody here tonight, we have four bulk variances that are residential. They should not last long. So for that reason, case number BA-2420 will be heard last, and case number BA-25-07 will be moved up to D, and this way we should hopefully get everybody in tonight. So the first case, case number BA-25-01, NVR Incorporated, Ryan's Home, 38 Charleston Street, bulk variance. Application, NVR Incorporated, Ryan Holmes is applicant and owner seeking bulk variance approval for recently constructed covered porch to remain in the required front yard setback. The applicant has provided a letter indicating an error on the approval plot plan resulted in a front porch setback of 23 feet, whereas 25 feet is required on premise known as Block 184.04, Lot 7, 38 Charleston Street. Expiration July 2nd, 2025. Good evening.
Good evening. Good evening, members of the board. My name is Robert McGowan. I'm representing the applicant. First, I want to apologize for somewhat casual appearance that wasn't intended. My jacket and tie are home, and it was the dog's fault. So please excuse me. We are here tonight seeking forgiveness essentially for an error that unintentionally occurred, whereas the survey was set believing it was a 25-foot setback. It was only a 23-foot setback, and the porch was built, the house has been built, and we believe it's a de minimis effect on the neighborhood. So with that, as long as we have jurisdiction, we gave notice for this tonight. I believe that was fine.
Okay.
Okay? Then we have the engineer here who can provide the testimony.
Okay. First, John, can you give us a little update on that, since it's probably through? Or Matt?
I'll take my board secretary hat off, and I can speak as a zoning officer. There was a miscalculation in the setback on the plot plan. It was measured to a line in front of the right-of-way line, in front of the front property line. So I guess the survey was set off of that off-measurement, and it resulted in that the foundation being placed two feet too close to the front property line within the 25-foot setback. It was caught later, much later, during, I believe, the certificate of occupancy as built. So this is just simply an error that carried through the process, and they're seeking to correct it by getting the variance. And it is holding up a final CO being issued without that variance.
Okay. Jennifer, do you think we need to hear from the engineer on this?
I don't think so. I would submit to the board that it is de minimis. I don't see any negative impact associated with granting the relief. It was absolutely an honest mistake. It wasn't done deliberately, and I agree with Mr. McGowan. It's de minimis in nature.
Board members? I didn't, not surprised. Okay, Mr. McGowan, I believe your engineer will have a night off, so first thing we'll do is technically, we have to go to public.
Sure.
So, Matt, we have to have a motion to go to public?
I'll make a motion to go to public.
Second. Second. On favor?
Aye.
Okay. So we're going to be going to opening. Do you have to announce?
Any member of the public that wants to speak on this application should do so now? Seeing none, Mr. Chair.
Okay.
Motion to close to public.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman? I'd like to make a motion to read this along. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the requested bulk variance.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Wisconsin. Roll call.
Mr. Cantor?
Yes.
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. Roscoe?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Ms. Scottson?
Yes.
Mr. Cabrakis?
Yes.
Chairman Mertens?
Yes, and Mr. McGowan, this is probably the quickest approval I've seen in my, all my years here. Now you can go home and get your jacket.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, professionals. Thank you, members.
Okay, next case, BA-24-17-14 Ford LLC. Construction of a single-family dwelling on a private street. Description, application of 14 Ford LLC as applicant to construct a single-family dwelling with an associated driveway, detached garage, potable well, septic system on Block 7-0, lots 27, 28, and 29.02 Church Street. Expiration date is June 30th, 2025. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of board, your professional staff, and members of the public. My name is Peter Klausser. I am Ken Pape's partner at the firm, Hile Brim Pape. Ken is on St. John right now, and he told me to reference the fact that-
Good for him.
And unfortunately for everybody, Jared is also with him, so you're stuck with me. So yes, Mr. Chair, this is an application to construct a single-family home on an undersized lot that doesn't have frontage on a public street. However, the property is accessed via a 50-foot-wide recorded private easement over which a driveway will be constructed, and that is how the property will have its normal driveway access to church. The applicant throughout this process met with the board's professionals to review the application. They made some changes, which are just relevant because of the description that you read. There is no more detached garage. It was a suggestion to sort of declutter the area and get rid of that garage. So that variance relief for front yard structure, even though technically there isn't a front yard, but we all kind of looked at it that way, that's gone. So we need the special variance relief under 4055D-35/36 to construct a home not on an improved public roadway, and then variance relief for the undersized lot. Because it's an undersized lot, Mr. Pate from our office had to send out letters to all the neighbors to say, do you want to buy our property, or will you sell us some of your property? They're sometimes referred to as Nash letters, because that was the name of the case where this first came up. Those letters were sent out on April 14th to all of our neighbors. Our engineer gave us the list of everybody that we're supposed to send it to that's connected to the property. We received zero responses in any form. We do have all of our receipts for the deliveries, and they were delivered to the board in early May, so that's part of the applicant's file. With that, I only have two witnesses this evening. I have Ellie Halpert, who is the applicant's engineer, who's designed this, and then we also have Jim Higgins, because we do need variance relief, so he's a professional planner. I think you're all familiar with Jim, so we'll have him make his presentation. But if I could start, I'd like to get Ellie sworn and then have him take us through.
Okay.
If you raise your right hand, do you swear from the testimony about you're about to give in this matter's the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Just spell your name for the record, please.
Eric Halpert. The last name is spelled H-A-L-P-E-R-T. First name is E-R-I-C. I go by Ellie.
Okay.
If you could just share, oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
If you could just share with the board your license, your educational background, and your business affiliation.
I'm a licensed, actively licensed professional engineer and planner in the state of New Jersey. I received my Bachelor's of Science in Civil Engineering from NJIT, and I own a small engineering firm in Jackson, New Jersey. These plans were prepared under my supervision.
Okay.
I'm familiar with the science.
Active license, current?
I'm currently licensed in the state of New Jersey.
Okay. We accept your qualifications. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I probably could cut through this one, too, if you would like. So the lot is existing. There's representation that the easement from Ford Road, or Church Road, I apologize, is existing, right? Church Road?
Yes, it's true.
They sent out the buy-sell letter, so the undersized lot is a hardship, and by sending those letters out and getting no response, it qualifies under the C1 as a hardship. Again, the buy-sell also would have gone towards the frontage, because they would have been able to maybe get some frontage from one of the two lots that are along Church. They got no response, so the lack of frontage is also a hardship. It's also, so they need a variance for the undersized lot for no frontage. They did remove the detached garage. That was something that we discussed at our tech meeting. And they also technically need a variance from the MLUL, because there is a provision in the MLUL regarding lots having access to a public street. But those three variances are definitely a hardship that they've demonstrated through the Nash letter, so I take no exception to the relief. It's one house. They're not looking to subdivide it. It's one lot. It's one house. You know, we have seen these lots like this in other sections of town. They do exist. If they were creating this, I would have a very different opinion, but it's existing, and they have access to it. So I take no exception to the relief that they're asking.
Well, it sounds like you got your work cut out for you now.
If you could, there's one thing I really think would be important to get on the record, because the whole purpose of that particular portion of municipal lands use law is safety and making sure that the property can be accessed. Your fire department has reviewed this. We have a blessing letter. They're okay with it. And maybe just briefly, Ellie, if you could just take us through that lot and the access that you've designed.
Just to very briefly go through the plan, we'll keep it brief. A single-family home is being proposed, and as per a meeting with the fire official and as shown on the screen, there is a 50-foot wide easement. Per the fire official, there will be a 12-foot paved asphalt driveway with an additional four feet on each side of grass pavers to provide access for a fire truck and additional pavers toward the end of the drive aisle and for a turnaround to get back out. These grass pavers will be sufficient to support the weight of the fire truck. As mentioned earlier, there is no garage, and the applicant will work with the board engineer to ensure all runoff is mitigated with yard inlets and recharge trenches.
Okay. Charlie, anything to add?
Yeah, so I think our ordinance formally requires a 12-foot wide paved driveway, but what's happened in a lot of these landlocked parcels is the fire bureau has asked for something larger for emergency access purposes. That creates a little bit of a hardship on these single-family dwellings, because it kind of kicks it into, or could potentially kick it into, like, what's a major development from a stormwater perspective. So what we've tried to do to not create that hardship is these overflow areas that are only going to be used in the event of an emergency for fire due to grass paver, so it's not regulated motor vehicle surface. The one question I did have was the number of bedrooms and the number of parking spaces. So they did eliminate the garage, but how many bedrooms and how many parking spaces, and does it comply with RSIS?
So as per the technical, the tech meeting, there are three labeled bedrooms. There is a fourth room labeled as an office with a closet. We'll consider that a bedroom. Four bedrooms, per RSIS, is 2.5 per RSIS. It actually rounds down to two. We are providing greater than that. It's a two-car garage, and there's one car in front. So we are providing three cars where, three-car driveway where two are required per RSIS.
And the reason why I ask that question, obviously, is the number of bedrooms increases, the number of parking spaces increases.
Absolutely.
So, you know, they're providing what's required in terms of RSIS. I would just say that, you know, the boards, if they act favorably, it should be conditioned on a maximum number of bedrooms, just because once you start adding bedrooms, then those other areas that are only supposed to be for emergency access then become for permanent parking. So that would be my recommendation, but obviously it's up to the board on that. And then I did see the exhibit that Mr. Halpert prepared. He eliminated the garage and put a drywall to capture some of runoff to mitigate any potential impacts to the, I think, the property to the southeast, where the natural drainage course flows, but other than that, I have no issues with the application.
Okay. Board members?
Just a quick question, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Where is Ford Road on that map?
Ford Road is along the right side of the map.
No, it's church.
That says church.
I'm sorry. Ford Road is along the right side. Ford Road is below. You cannot capture it in the map. We do have an aerial, if you would like to see an aerial, a wider view.
No, Ford Road is on the bottom of that map.
It's on the bottom, and we have an aerial. They just happen to have a Ford Road address.
Oh, okay.
Ford Road is oriented differently in this view. I'm sorry.
And Mr. Chair, just to clarify for the record, so the indication is that they're eliminating the detached garage, so if anyone in the future wanted to add that back in, they would have to come back to the board for that relief? All right.
Jennifer, so since there's no frontage, basically just the driveway, they don't have to do anything with the sidewalks?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
Okay. And do you think it's necessary that we need the planner to testify?
I don't.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I'm not going to get in the way of moving the application right along. I'd be a full to do so.
Okay, I'm happy to hear that. So we do have public, we do have to call for public-
I'll make a motion to open to public, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Second by Jose, on favor.
Aye.
Any member of the public who wishes to speak? Please feel free to do so now. Seeing none.
Motion to close.
Second.
Second by Anne Marie, on favor.
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Before you continue, just for the record, plan rendering is going to be A11, A12 for the aerial, and if the client is amenable to it, the number of bedrooms by deed restriction, not just the approval so that it's memorialized?
Yes.
So my thought, my thought on that, I think one of the easiest ways to do that, I can't imagine that we have any issue with that, is that four bedrooms be included in the resolution, and then I will adopt a deed restriction that attaches the resolution that we have to follow all those rules. It's, as a lawyer who looks at this stuff later, it's much easier when you have the context of the entire resolution, rather than just sort of a random deed restriction to the number of bedrooms. Now we'll have some, and I'll review that with your attorney and give them copies to review before it gets recorded.
Okay.
That's acceptable. We've done it that way.
And from the zoning officer's standpoint, that's great, because the restriction on the garage would be the same, and it would be deed restricted at that point for that purpose as well.
Agreed.
And I always put in the resolution, as was mentioned by your professionals, the only one that can change that, because we have to leave it open so that it could be changed, is we have to come back in front of the board, and you would have the authority to undo that restriction.
Okay.
The only other thing, can you provide us copies of that easement? Because it's just shown on a map and on a tax map, but we don't physically have it.
Sure. Yeah, I have, we have one in our title search, and then it's shown on the tax map, and then both of those property owners signed off on this application.
Okay. Summation or?
I think the board completely understands this application. It's a single-family home. We just need to be able to get out to the roadway, and I would ask that you act favorably on it.
Okay, thank you. Members of the board, it's a pleasure. Mr. Chairman, with all the stuff that we talked about here, with the deed restriction with the bedrooms and the garage, I would like to move to approve this application. Okay, a motion by Mr. Hughes. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Mr. Cantor. Roll call, please, Matt.
Mr. Cantor?
Yes.
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. Roscoe?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Ms. Scottson?
Yes.
Mr. Cabrakis?
Yes.
Chairman Mertens?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good luck to the applicants.
Thanks very much.
Okay, we'll go to number three, C, case number BA-25-08 Hassan Monoram. I'm sorry if I'm, oh, I'm sorry.
Do you need time to pack up here?
Sure. Thank you. Thanks for bringing it. Okay, application Hassan Monoram as applicant and owner seeking bulk variance approval for a construction of a second-story addition within the side yard setback. The second-story addition is proposed almost entirely over the existing structure, except for a two-feet rear overhang. Renovation on the first floor are also proposed on the premise known as Block 129, Lot 61, 40 Pearl Drive. Expiration August 6, 2025. Good evening.
Why don't we get you, and you're, you're the owner, the property owner, representing yourself, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, and you have, who are with you?
Okay. We'll get both of you someone at the same time, then we're-
You raise your right hand, both of you? You swear from the testimony about to give in this matter's the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
One at a time, please, say your name into the microphone and spell it.
The mic is actually on the table. Yeah, that bar is, hidden mic.
Hassan Loharam.
Okay, and you're the owner?
Yes.
Okay. And your architect?
Jason Peist, architect.
Please spell your last name.
P-E-I-S-T.
Thank you. You are sworn.
Okay, do we need to get his qualifications?
Yeah.
If you could just-
I'm a licensed architect in New Jersey. Been licensed for about 10 years. Went to NJIT with a Bachelor's of Architecture, which is a five-year degree. I have testified in front of numerous boards before. First time in Howell, though.
And your license is current?
Yes, it is.
Okay, thank you. So it's all yours.
So I'm adding a second floor. I'm doing some renovation.
Just try to get more in the mic.
Yeah, I'm adding a second-floor addition. I'm doing some renovation on the first floor, and I'm seeking bulk variance for the setback.
Mr. Chair, if you'd like me to help out? So this lot is narrow, and if you look at the exhibit, the building envelope is like 10 feet wide, maybe? Like, the red lines is the building envelope. So the existing house, obviously, is already identified as being within both the front, I mean, the both sides setback areas. What they're doing is putting a second story on, so they would need relief to stay within the same footprint, but they're bumping back like a couple feet. So it's basically a second-story addition that's going to be in both setback areas plus that couple feet in the rear. Clearly, they are more than enough from the rear property line, but given that building envelope, I don't know that you would get a structure in, a habitable structure, that doesn't require setback relief.
That's a tight squeeze.
And they're not going beyond the existing building line, so they're not exacerbating an existing situation. So I would take no exception to the relief being requested.
Okay. Charlie?
Yeah, so, and I think there's a note on the plan, there's an existing deck that also encroaches into that side yard, and I think the zoning office might have issued it in an aisle, asking for like proof that, prior approvals for that. Has that been demolished, or are they looking to keep that?
It was demolished.
Okay, so that eliminates that relief. And then the driveway that's situated along the easterly property line, I think we cited it needing relief, because it's within five feet, but that, has that been existing for a long period of time?
The driveway?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. And was it there when you bought the property?
Yes.
Okay, so I would just say, it's been there, let's grant the relief, just so that way in the future, he doesn't need relief for anyone in the future, doesn't need relief for that. And then I think there was, the only comment from any of the outside agencies was the Board of Health. So is the dwelling, are you serviced by public water and sewer?
Yes, correct.
Okay. So I think there was a well that they had record on the property. You're going to need to either abandon that or convert that to irrigation only and get Board of Health approval for that? You have no problem with that?
Yes, no problem, yeah. I'm going to convert it to irrigation.
Okay. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Okay. John?
I have nothing.
I don't know if you want to say something, or, because I, I mean, you're in a good spot right now, so you can have an early night, or if you want to put something on the record.
I think I'm okay.
Are there, Mr. Chairman, are there neighbors on either side?
There, there's a lot of houses that are very similar to this in smaller-sized lots. I think other houses have been added on to as well, so it's not irregular out of the development that was there. The lot size that they want is 20,000 square feet, and this is in the 8,000, so it's significantly smaller than the zone requirement. So a lot of the houses in the development would have the same kind of issues that they had.
Thank you.
So, this is only setbacks, right?
Yes.
Yes, okay. And what's the driveway again, Charlie? That's a little bit in the setbacks, too?
Yeah, we require a minimum of five-foot setback to our property line, so... But, our review of aerials for the property looked like it had been there for some time. It might have been gravel, and then maybe paved.
I'm just trying to clarify for the...
Yeah. And then I would just be safe, too, so their plan does show two sheds in the rear yard. You know, I think the board, if there's... If they have no issue with it, should consider granting the relief of that, too. Usually, our setback is equal to the height when it's under... Matt, what is it, 10,000 square feet, or...?
Uh, setback would be equal to the height, except if you are 10... Sorry, 120 square feet or less, and eight feet and less in height, it would have a zero-foot setback.
Okay.
So, I would just consider gra... Do you know what the height of the sheds are that are out there in your backyard?
Uh, I don't have the sheds anymore.
You don't have them anymore?
No.
Oh, they're gone?
Yeah.
All right, then that puts it...
Makes it easier.
Problem solved.
Problem solved. Okay, at this time, we'll open to public. I'll make that motion again.
Second.
Second by Mr. Cantor, on favor?
Yes.
Aye.
Okay, Matt?
Any members of the public wishing to speak on this application, please come forward now. Seeing none.
Seeing none. Do we have a motion to close?
Motion to close.
Motion to close.
Ann Marie, first, second, anybody?
Second.
Second by Jose, on favor?
Aye. Yes.
So, any further comments? I didn't think so. Okay, what's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman? I'd like to make a motion that we approve the bulk variance requested by this applicant.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Jose. Roll call.
Mr. Cantor?
Yes.
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. Osco?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Ms. Scottson?
Yes.
Mr. Kabarakas?
Yes.
Chairman Mertens?
Yes.
Good luck.
Good night.
Okay, I don't want to jinx it, but I'm going to bring up case... The fourth case, which will be switched over to, let's see here. That's a case... Yeah. Case number BA 2507, Kyle Demetro. Type varian... Both variance. Description, application of Kyle Demetro as applicant and owner seeking both variance approval for the construction addition within the front yard setback known as premise known as 198 Lot 1, 16 Hickory Avenue. Exploration date is August 6, 2025. Good evening.
Good evening.
Get your sworn in? You raise your right hand? Do you swear affirm the testimony about giving this matter the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And state and spell your name for the record, please.
Kyle Demetro.
And you are the owner?
Yes, ma'am.
And I take it you're the only one testifying?
Uh, yes, yes, sir.
Okay, good. Okay.
I'm here tonight seeking a variance for approval to construct a single-family addition within the setbacks on the... It's a front yard setback of a paper street, so it's the side of my house. And I'm looking just to extend the bedroom and build a master bedroom and master closet, master suite addition.
Okay. Jennifer?
So, basically, if this was a normal side yard, he would not be here. He's here because technically, what is it, Schulte Avenue? Is that how you say it?
To be honest with you, I don't even know.
What is it, Matt? Schulte? So... But it's a paper street, and it's unimproved. So, but technically, it's a front yard, and that's why he's here, because he doesn't meet the front yard setback. The house is a little bit on an angle, as you can see from the plan, and so when he goes back, he starts out at about 19 feet, and he ends up at about 17 and a half feet, but it's not improved. And I don't think the town has any plans to improve it anytime soon. I would take no exception. It's a modest addition. The house itself is not large by any scale. It fits into the neighborhood, and he just wants to put a master bedroom. So, I don't take any exception to the relief that he's requesting.
Okay. Charlie?
So, similar to the last one, they have an existing residential driveway that's within five feet of the property line. I think it looks like it's been there for quite some time, but the board should just grant the relief, just so it goes into the record, if you act favorably on the application. There's a shed in the rear yard also that's at like the northeastern corner. Can you talk about that? Is that new? Have you... Has it been there when you bought the house? Yeah, so the shed itself was there when I purchased the house, and it wasn't in that exact location. I moved it to the back corner, and as it sits now, I have a border around the shed, and the shed... That's what sits over the property line.
You're not over the property line. You're... It's just... We're just trying to figure out...
Okay.
How tall is it?
The shed itself, I just measured today, is 10 and a half feet tall. Okay. And you use... It's just residential, you store garden equipment and stuff like that? Yeah, exactly, yes. Yeah, so I would say the board should grant relief of the location of the shed. And just give a note, the back of the property is actually also a paper street right away, so, you know, it's not like we're putting it right next to, you know, the rear yard for another property. It's a paper street.
Yeah, so that would need relief not only from the setback from the side lot line, but it's in a front yard technically.
Okay.
So, I would get the... I would agree with Charlie that you should get the relief for the shed as well while you're here.
So, and then the last two things I'll just say is, you know, obviously, we reviewed the GeoWeb to see if there's any mapping of wetlands and things like that. There is like, Matt, wetlands into the wooded area in the back. I would just say that, looking at historic aerials, this property has been developed, and that's been maintained grass for a long period of time. I would take no exception to the board granting any need to go get like an LOI or anything like that for the development of an existing residential property that's been maintained grass for a long period of time. And the one thing I would just say is the Board of Health did issue a memo regarding like the number of bathrooms that are being proposed, so obviously, you'll have to comply with Board of Health as part of the approval process. You have any issues with that? No, I've been in contact with them the whole time, and we have all that straightened out. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Hey, thanks, Charlie. John? Good?
Good.
Board members? No questions? Think we're back to public. Opening motion to go to public. Ann Marie and Jose is on second. On favor?
Aye.
Any members of the public, if you wish to speak on this application, please come forward. Seeing none.
Ann Marie, motions. Second by Matt. On favor?
Yeah. I'm sorry, just one quick... Finish that. Just one quick question.
Okay.
Yeah.
The proposed addition to the house, the setback is off of a paper street? The street's not actually there?
Correct, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay.
Chair, I apologize. Mr. Aguirre just brought it to my attention. So, on the... I don't think it's shown on the plot plan, but on the survey of the property, the shed that you relocated, you said there's a timber border around that? Yes, sir. Yeah, so I think that timber border, like, looks like it extends a little bit onto your neighbor's property, Lot Number Four to the northeast. So, what I would say, the board can't obviously grant a variance for something being on someone else's property, so you either need to get something in writing from that property owner saying that that can stay there, or you would need to relocate it, and, you know, I would say the board... You can grant a Missouri or setback for it to be on the property line, but we can't grant it to be on the neighbor's property.
Absolutely.
So, you have any issues with that? No, that's fine. So, just make sure it's on my side. Either on your property, or if you get something in writing from the neighbor, nothing in writing? All right, then relocate it to be on your property, sorry. All right, and that's just the border that extends over there?
Yeah.
All right, no problem.
Good for them. Okay, not seeing anything else. Can we have a motion from the board on this application?
Mr. Chairman? I'll make a motion that we grant the bulk variance sought by the applicant.
Do we have a second? Yeah, Mr. Chair, just to emphasize what we just talked about with the going on to the next property, that'll be taken care of as long as that is. I will second the motion. Thanks, Matt. Roll call.
Mr. Cantor?
Yes.
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. Osco?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Ms. Scottson?
Yes.
Mr. Kabarakas?
Yes.
Chairman Mertens?
Yes, and good luck.
Thank you, everyone. Have a great night.
You, too. 7:30. We've heard four applications. Normally, we'd be going to a break, but I think we can continue, if everybody's good with that? Yeah, let's go. Okay, Sal, I told you it wasn't... You wouldn't have to wait too long. And I wasn't... Okay, next case is BA 24 dash 20, Julie Rich LLC. Use variance, both variance and preliminary and final site plan. Application of Julie Rich LLC as applicant and owner seeking use variance, both variance and preliminary and final site plan approval for demolition of an existing bank and construction of a 5,670-square-foot, one-story convenience center and fueling station with other site improvements on premise known as Block 141, Lot 1, 646 U.S. Route 9. Exploration date is June 26, 2025.
Good evening, Mr. Chair. Members of the board, Salvatore Alfieri, Cleary Giacobi, Alfieri and Jacobs on behalf of the applicant. As the board chairman indicated, this is an application that does require der variance relief for a quick check at the corner of Strickland and Nine, where the former bank building was. It's been vacant for many years. The... We've received recently reports from your board engineer and your board planner. We're prepared to address all those comments. We also received an approval letter from your fire marshal. I know Shari issued a prior report. Our professionals have met with her, and in the most recent submission, we believe we addressed all of her comments, but of course, we'd be willing to work with her. She's not here tonight, but whatever comments she has, we'd be glad to work with. We're going to be a little longer than the prior applications in that we have five witnesses.
Okay.
And we're going to ask that our engineer come up to begin.
Well, let's get them all...
Want to swear them all?
Yes, swear them in, and then we can go from there.
If you'll raise your right hand, do you swear affirm the testimony, you'll give him this matter the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
I do.
Just one at a time, if you'll state and spell your name for the record.
Sure. Aaron Chan, last name spelled C-H-A-N. I'm a project site civil engineer and stonefield engineering.
Okay, next.
Good evening, Christine Cofone, I'm the applicant's planner.
Thank you, next.
John Korak, last name C-O-R-A-K. Traffic engineer.
Okay, next.
Jennifer Cadwallader, C-A-D-W-A-L-L-A-D-E-R. I'm the quick check development manager.
Okay.
Oliver Young, last name Y-O-U-N-G. I'm a project architect.
Thank you. And you qualify them as you get to...
As we go.
Yes.
Okay. We're going to call Mr. Chan, our engineer, first.
Okay.
Aaron, would you place your credentials on the record, please? And we're seeking only to have you qualified as, not only, but solely as a professional engineer, correct? Correct. Go ahead.
Yes, I graduated the Bachelor's in Civil Engineering from the College of New Jersey. I've been practicing in this field for the last 12 years. I'm a licensed professional engineer in the state, provide extra engineering testimony at over 45,000 support in state. My license is current and in good standing.
We accept your qualifications. Thanks.
Thank you. And are you going to be referring to an exhibit at the beginning of your testimony?
Yes, the first exhibit I would like to pull up would be the aerial exhibit I sent over earlier today via email.
Did we mark this with a number yet, John?
Not yet.
Uh, we're going to make this A-21. Thank you.
A-21 is an aerial exhibit, and what we have done is taken a recent high-quality aerial image of the current site. Mr. Alfieri has indicated this is the PNC Bank on the Route 9 southbound side at the intersection, the northwestern corner intersection of Strickland Road. It is a signalized intersection. You do see the jug handle ramp, as well as the on-ramp onto Route 9 southbound, just immediately to the south. To the east, you see the 7-11 that's recently constructed, the Starbucks, and I'm sure the parking lot that most of everybody in the township is familiar with. Immediately to the north of our property was the former basement waterproofing place. I do believe it is now vacant, and then just beyond that is Mr. Fent. To the west, we have the Hill Crestway cul-de-sac with the residences on the side. But generally, that's the existing, existing site. And onsite itself, the bank is 2,600 square feet, single-story building, three drive-up ATM, drive-up lanes in the rear of the building. And there's a total of 42 parking spaces onsite, which leads to overall, as developed, 43.3% impervious coverage, with very limited landscaping onsite currently. There's some landscaping along the perimeter, some mature trees along the perimeter. However, you can sort of see from this aerial, there's actually only just two large trees in that large maintained lawn in the rear portion, well, considered the rear portion of our site, towards the western side. Access to the site can be achieved through a right-in, right-out driveway on Route 9, and also two driveways along Strickland. That's currently 175 feet from the intersection itself, and then also 30 feet from the westerly property line. So, those are the two driveways from Strickland entering the property. That being said, I think we can switch over to our next exhibit, which is the site plan rendering.
A-22? A-22. Could you identify that we're calling it a site plan rendering?
Sure, yes. The site plan rendering, A-22, is the colorized version of the proposed site plan submitted, and we also took the liberty of adding the proposed landscaping, which you can see there's numerous across the entirety of the property. And that the intention here is to provide a clean and clear visual to the board and the public, you know, what the proposal actually is. And the proposal is a 5,670-square-feet convenience store with a fueling canopy that has eight fueling islands underneath the canopy. That's in two rows, you know, four and four in two rows, and that's all within the highway commercial zone, though technically not permitted within this zone, though it's obvious that the use typically favors for the motoring public. You'll see that for 7-11, you'll see that wall, wall, all within this particular corridor. Additionally, when we sought out to design the site plan, we took a look at the conditional use standards that would apply for a gas station convenience store within your HD zones. And looking at those particular requirements, we fully comply with all three of them. I'll just read one or two quickly. So, we are on a corner lot, fronting a state highway with a side street with access to both. We are... There's no drive-through facilities proposed with this, and the on-premise food consumption area is under the 20% of the gross floor area, actually calculates to around 3% of the overall floor area within the building. That being said, there is a total of 68 parking spaces proposed onsite. This meets and exceeds the township calculation for this type of use of 54 spaces, and also the stall dimensions and geometry also fully comply with the township standard as well. And between all the site layouts and features, we fully meet and exceed the front yard setback, the rear yard setback, and as well as the side yard setback. We are well under the impervious coverage of 70%, with a proposal of 56%. The maximum building height is also much below the 45-foot requirement with 32 feet proposed. The trash enclosure and all the other site elements so far has presented fully conform with the requirements. There are some, what I'll call, site design type of waivers that require variance relief as well. I'll highlight those as we go through our presentation. There's a dedicated loading space behind the building. You can faintly see it, but it's immediately behind the building on the western portion of the site. Maybe try my laser here, right in this portion. And that's 15 feet wide by 100 feet long. That's exceeding the township requirement of 14 by 60. The proposed trash enclosure is also located, you know, in the most opposite corner from the frontage. I'll use my laser again, in the top-left corner of the site, which is the northwestern corner, and that's setback 25 feet from the property line. Access to the property will remain pretty similar as it is today. There will be... We'll maintain, if you don't mind zooming out a little bit, we'll maintain the right-in, right-out driveway along Route 9, as well as the first driveway along Strickland. Previously, I think it's 170 linear feet or so away from the intersection with Route Previously, I think it's one hundred and seventy linear feet or so away from the intersection of Route nine. We're proposing to shift that thirty feet away from the intersection to provide a little bit more stacking room for the left-turn vehicles going on to Route nine northbound. And then the last driveway, I think I'm blocked by the chair, but in this portion, in the western portion of the site, previously, we were proposing to maintain the same location as it is today. But then seeing the first round of review letter comments from your board's professionals, we had to also move that away from the residences by around twenty feet or so so that fully conforms with the fifty-foot buffer line from the western property line. So that's a full movement driveway at that particular section. And then this middle driveway, as proposed right now, would be all movements allowed except for the left-out movement. So a left-in is permitted as currently shown. That being said, we did also make application to the DOT. They have deemed our application complete. We have been pushing them to issue a formal and full technical review letter. They have not done so yet, but we did meet with them from a pre-application standpoint to discuss the access scheme as well as to make full application to them. Our traffic engineer will speak a little bit more through that. Couple minor notes, as far as the site layout is concerned, is a proposed sidewalk connection to the Strickland sidewalk. And that's five feet wide into, that'll lead through this crosswalk into the front of the building. There's also a few bike racks, proposed, six bike racks proposed at this corner here as well. So given that we are proposing, what we're proposing is a major development in the eyes of NTP as well as how township stormwater regulations. We are actually proposing three stormwater basins to attenuate and meet our stormwater regulations. There's three sets of basins. There's one along the rear, sort of in this infiltration basin with a sand bottom. And then there's two along the front, a fire retention basin with plantings, and then also another infiltration basin along the hard corner of the site. That's also a sand bottom infiltration basin. Between the three basins, we are providing a total of thirty-six thousand and six hundred cubic foot of storage volume. And those are intended to infiltrate as we did find usable infiltration rates across from our geotechnical testing. And reading the, and once the, I'm sorry, the, once the flows are attenuated and infiltrated, the conveyance and discharge will be along a set of inlets along Route nine, generally where I'm lasering, sort of middle of our block, and also another one at the corner of Strickland and the Route nine intersection. We did get a chance to review your board engineers' latest review letter comments just issued the other day. I do feel that with the comments that were being made, there was some, there was some fine tuning of the stormwater basins that's necessary. So as such, I think we will also propose another additional basin in the green area, in the grassed area to the north of our development. I did share that additional exhibit as well, and I think it might be beneficial to the board to just see generally what it looks like from a conceptual standpoint. I believe it's called the stormwater exhibit in this, in this segment. Thank you.
Eight twenty-three?
So what eight twenty-three is, is pretty much the current proposed stormwater plan. We actually added in this red line in this northern area, the additional stormwater basin that we feel is necessary to fully meet all of the, your board's engineers' comments that was outlined in this most recent letter. And that will provide additional thirty-five hundred cubic foot of added storage volume across site. So I think that'll bring the total close to around fifty thousand cubic foot of storage. All of these basins are intended to drain within seventy-two hours. There's, there'll be no standing water. Additionally, they're generally three to four to five feet deep in total depth. So they're not, you know, monstrosity ten foot deep. But they also do have proposed split rail fencing around it. We do know that there's a lot of activity at these type of uses. So we went ahead and proposed those type of split rail fence along the perimeter of each of the basins.
Before you move off stormwater, two follow-up questions. Number one is, all of the basins, whether it's three or four ultimately, will be privately maintained by the property owner? Is that correct?
That's correct.
And number two is, you would have to submit a revised plan, fully engineered, to add that basin? You're comfortable that you could do that and address the comments in Charlie's report?
That's correct.
Okay, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Yes, so we did have a short conversation today with the board engineer. We went through the comments, you know, our intention, our representation here is to resubmit a fully engineered version of this plan and then address any of his comments. That being said, the signage, I want to maybe flip to the signage exhibit.
Eight twenty-four?
So what eight twenty-four is, is the same site plan you've been seeing. However, we blown up the signage that we're proposing and we pointed it to the various locations and the various elevations on the building as well as the camp, the canopy, as well as the freestanding sign that we're proposing. And that way, it's hopefully a clear visual for everybody to digest the signage scheme across the site. This is a little bit different from the initial submission. The initial submission had a total of ten signs. I don't think I need to detail all of them, but really what we have done here is we reviewed your board planner's letter as well as the board engineer's letter. We looked at some of the variance relief we were seeking. We felt that it was a way to streamline it. And what we have done to streamline is effectively consolidate all of the freestanding large branding signs with the gas prices into one. That's going to split the, between the two basins along Route nine. And that particular sign is going to still be the one hundred and twenty square foot as previous before. And it's going to be setback ten feet from the property line. It's a height, overall height of twenty feet. The setback of ten feet from the property line does require relief. The ordinance calls for twenty feet. However, I want to make mention, this particular curve line along Route nine is a little bit further than usual. Also, given the fact that Route nine has a particular travel speed that we all are aware of and also at the signal itself, there's designated turn lanes should you maybe need to see the sign and then wants, want to utilize the-
I'm going to stop you. We just heard the seven eleven across the street. They came up with the same argument for the ten feet, and you know what happened? They put it at twenty feet. So I don't support a setback relief for the sign. And I also want to talk about that still the number of signs is too much. You don't need a monument sign, a sign on the building, a sign around every face of the canopy. People are generally not that dumb. They won't understand what the site is. So I don't support the signage on the canopy. And I think your sign should be setback to twenty feet like we make everybody else along Route nine.
Sure, the only item I want to make mention, and we can understand that, I think it's that particular building. You can see the outline of that building to the north of us. It's setback very close. I, our fear initially was if we shifted it deeper into the site, it just creates a visibility concern.
Yeah, I don't have a concern.
It would be a visibility concern. I thought closer to the road might be more a visibility concern.
I would agree, yeah.
So.
Yeah, and how tall is that sign compared to that building?
Twenty feet is the sign.
Yeah, and how, how tall is that? Is it a one-story building that you're concerned about?
Yes, it is, right here.
Yeah, so I mean, a sign twenty feet in the air versus a one-story building that's maybe ten or eleven feet? You know, maybe that concern goes away. The one comment I also had was, I think we cited them because ordinance says no red, green flashing signs in proximity to right-of-way. The seven eleven across the street, I'm pretty sure they were made to not have like red-colored digital signage on theirs. I would say that would be a same requirement for this application, especially given the proximity to a traffic signal. You don't want to confuse drivers with red and green and stop and go and all that kind of stuff.
As far as I'm concerned, I believe everybody else, so.
We can agree to swap the LED colors to white. I believe the seven eleven has that white color. I think the updated location, you know, is also now setback from that stop bar from, you know, previously it was about twenty, thirty feet or so. Now it's about one hundred and ten square feet. But we understand that we can definitely switch the colors of the LED for the gas prices to white, matching the seven eleven.
Mr. Chan, one more question about that building to the north. Do you know what the setback is?
If I were to estimate it, it probably looks like about twenty feet from here.
All right, I don't know, it just looks a little further back than me. But the point is, I don't think that that's going to be an impediment to that sign. I think it's far back enough where, yeah.
Okay, and we, we still, and I, I understand Jennifer's comment about the building mounted signs. Aaron will discuss what's reflected there and then I think have a compromise perhaps that the board can consider.
Sure, yeah, understood the concerns already raised. I'll just go through what's on this exhibit and discuss the next piece here. So currently, there's two quick-check signs, one on each of the elevations facing the public streets as well as this Q logo that's on the tower element that our architect will speak to, that's also on the two, facing the two public streets. And then lastly, it's the two quick-check signs on the two corners for the particular canopy. And then I think I want to make mention, just from the initial proposal, was monument signs along Strickland that has now been eliminated. We're showing three square foot directional signs just to indicate the location of the driveways.
So the two separate monument signs that had the gas pricing are being eliminated? And then also the separate monument sign that was like advertising the development company, that's also being eliminated?
That's correct.
All right, just want to make sure that's clear.
Okay, anything else?
Yes.
Sure, yeah, I'll try to be comprehensive, a brief lighting onsite, you know, is being proposed with fourteen poles, their modern LED light fixtures, and their mounting height is eighteen point five feet. All of the lights, except for one, currently is specified to have side shields and back shields on them. The one light that's currently not having that shield is at the Strickland driveway. To the left curve of that Strickland driveway, it's mounted, two fixtures at ninety degree. However, we can agree to just add the shielding to them. That's not an issue to us. And there was a little bit of relief being sought as the point five foot handle is being maintained across the entire development footprint of the site, more or less the paved areas. However, it drops below the point three minimum requirement as you enter the residential buffers. And that's intentional. We really made sure that it was zero foot handle in the rear area along the perimeter and anywhere where we're budding some of our neighbors.
Are those lights designed to be on twenty-four hours?
Yes. So I think I'll try to wrap up here with the landscaping. It is a comprehensive, if you don't mind sharing, the original site plan rendering, I believe was eight twenty-two. This is a comprehensive, and I feel it's pretty of an intensive landscaping plan, it's a mix of trees, shrubs, and intended to provide, you know, various textures, contrasting form. There's a high number of trees and overall shrubbery being proposed. It's one hundred and three trees across this site. The shrub is two hundred and, two hundred and fifty-seven, and there's a lot of ground cover across the varying different areas onsite. It really is intended to be a tiered and staggered approach just to provide that residential buffering along the rear, along this rear buffer as well. Those plantings are planted on a five-foot-high earth berm just to provide a little bit more height for that buffering. And then the, some of the other site elements onsite is also intended to be screened as well. So that's your trash enclosure. I think in the last revised version of the plan, there's a hot box in that area. We know New Jersey American Water has a very large hot box structure. So that's proposed and intended to be fully screened as well. We do know that it is within the front yard of Strickland. So we wanted to make sure that was fully screened. And I think there was a comment in the professional's review letter regarding, I think just south of us, there's the ML seven zone. Recall previously, our driveways within that residential buffer, we shifted that out of set buffer. And same thing, we reduced a couple parking spaces here. And that's intended to be landscaped to provide a little bit more screening along that front. However, technically, we do not comply with the fact that the full Strickland buffer is being proposed along the entirety of that particular frontage. However, I think you can recall and know the site condition with the jug handle is also the, also the on-ramp onto Route nine southbound. There's a large grass area with some trees within the DOT's right-of-way that provides essentially that, that effect in that particular stretch. I think it's to a tune of around two hundred and fifty feet in, in full in that area.
I have two follow-ups. First of all, the refuse area, can you point that out again to the board?
Sure, yes.
And is that maintained in a masonry block enclosure?
Yes, it is.
Okay, and then sidewalks, you mentioned the sidewalks on Strickland. Can you just describe for the board what the condition, what type of sidewalks are on Strickland and whether there are sidewalks on nine?
Yeah, currently, there is a about five, five-foot sidewalk on Strickland. And then we're proposing the same concrete sidewalk to connect from the Strickland public sidewalk up through the crosswalk here and into the front of the site. And speaking of sidewalk, I think I do want to make mention, you know, we do require relief as the sidewalk along the edge of the building, up against the parking spaces, it's typical to what you see at quick-check at Wawa's. There's, there's bollards in front of them that preserve the full usable width of the sidewalk without allowing vehicles to overhang the curb with, with their bumpers. But anybody familiar with the quick-check footprint and their building layout knows that the entrance is also at the corner there where there is a, above eight-foot sidewalk in that area. It's closer to eleven or twelve feet in that area for the entrances where it is critical.
And then sidewalk along the remaining frontage, does any sidewalk exist?
There's a sidewalk along Route nine. We do know there's a bus stop currently at that intersection as well. So the intention here is to have that be connected with, with, with the Strickland sidewalk and then brought into the site that pulls any pedestrians off of the Route nine side and then onto the side street. And if they want to enter the store, they can go about it that way.
Does that sidewalk go all the way from Route nine all the way up to Strickland to the first next property? To the west, I would believe.
So currently, that sidewalk goes up to the bus stop.
Okay, I know from Route nine, but it's going towards the residential area, is that? Because I can't really see.
Yes, yes, the sidewalk along Strickland will be across the entire entirety of our frontage.
Okay, yeah, so to clarify, there is existing sidewalk along that frontage. They're just reconstructing the portions where they're relocating their driveways. But they are proposing sidewalk along the Route nine frontage with the application too, correct?
Currently, yes. The full sidewalks also proposed along the Route nine frontage as well up to the end of our property.
Yeah, so it already exists along Strickland and then, yeah, they're reconstructing what they need to for the driveways. And then they're extending all the way along Route nine to the north. So just want to give that clarity.
Would you mind going back to the previous exhibit where you had the over?
The aerial?
Yeah, the aerial.
That was A twenty-one.
Now, on the landscape plan, since Sherry isn't here, Jen might have information on this question. But you have a lot of green on the architectural plan. Is that existing or is that? Because that, that still looks pretty sparse. Or are we looking at this at what time of the year?
Sure, currently it's very sparse. When I went and saw the site today, it is still very sparse. There's effectively two large trees in that grass area behind the bank today. And then there's existing trees along the perimeter of their property. So what you saw in eight twenty-two are proposed site plan rendering, it's all proposed.
Okay, because I just want the board to be clear that that's not what's there now.
Yeah, and to just, to give the board additional clarity, right? So the existing driveway for the bank that sits there right now, if that, if they wanted to come and put a bank there right now, they would need relief from that driveway because it's within a fifty-foot residential buffer. The property to the west, and then obviously you can see, Hill Crest Way is all residential zoning and contains residential uses. So there is a fifty-foot residential buffer requirement along the western property line. They're, with this application, they're relocating the driveway to be outside of that fifty-foot buffer. So they are eliminating that encroachment. And I don't think Mr. Chan talked about it too, but maybe he can elaborate for the board on like what, how the grading is being proposed there. There's berming and there's landscaping going in that fifty-foot area. I think that's important context for the board and the public.
Correct, within that first twenty-five feet off of the residential property line, there is a earth berm, five foot tall, and then on top of that is the proposed landscaping. And then from there, the next twenty-five feet or so is the stormwater basin where there's no paved improvements. And then starts the curb line for, for the proposed fixture.
Okay.
And, and just following up on the landscaping, your office, or your landscape architect at your office did meet with Sherry and you, you, the most recent set of plans addressed the comments that were discussed with her. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct. Our, our engaged landscape architect, Bozenberg Landscape Architectural, they didn't get a chance to meet with Sherry on April twenty-fourth onsite just to walk over the varying conditions. They can see the site for what it is. And the current resubmitted plan addressed, I believe, bulk, if not all of the comments. And if she have, continue to have any other comments, we can be more than happy to address them.
Mr. Chan, are you sure? So you said the first twenty-five feet is bermed and then the next twenty-five feet is the basin. Are you sure that's currently what's reflected on the plan? Are you sure that's not a full fifty-foot berming and plantings?
Yeah, yes.
Could you go to eight twenty-two, John, please?
Yeah, I just-
Yes, apologies, thank you for that clarification. The first fifty feet of the residential buffer is the earth berm, five foot tall, fully landscaped. And then the next fifty feet or so is the stormwater basin, thank you.
So, yeah, that's important for the board, right? So they're taking that driveway that's within that buffer and they're, they're putting a bermed, you know, to create some separation. And then they're also planting above that. That's different than asking for even partial or full relief for the buffer. I think that's important context.
That's all we have with the engineer, Mr. Chan.
So Charlie, anything more than one?
Yeah, so obviously, there's a number of outstanding stormwater comments in my letter. Coming into this afternoon, I was a little bit more concerned about the layout. I did have a discussion with Mr. Chan this afternoon. He did present the exhibit which shows, it's not shown on this rendering here, but north of the site, there's a little triangular portion of green space and north of their parking and west of their, their access from Route nine. They're proposing to, or conceptually have proposed another above-ground stormwater basin in there. What I would say is, I'm, at this point, you know, I'm confident that they can work through most of our comments by providing that above-ground basin. What I would say is, you know, if the board were to act affirmatively on this application, right, during residential compliance, if there were a need to put in retaining walls or fencing to try to get more storage, to try to address all the comments in our letters, obviously, that would be in a different improvement that would change the, the material of the application that you guys were saw. They would probably need relief of the, the retaining wall and the fence, depending on the yard area and the height and things like that. If that wasn't required, I would be, I'm confident that we can address it as part of residential compliance. But if that was something that they proposed, I would say they would have to come back to the board at that point to address that. Couple comments I also want to talk about, so the lighting. So I think the color temperature that's being proposed is five thousand Kelvin, is that correct?
That's correct.
So, you know, anytime that a use of bus residential, I tend to recommend the board consider three thousand Kelvin. That tends to be a warmer, yellower light. You know, if Ms. Bureau is here, I think she would tell you, commercial sites, four thousand Kelvin is probably all right. What I would say is, let's hear the public, you know, I think we have some people in the audience here. My recommendation would be if we're hearing concerns about light and light spillage, that the three thousand Kelvin would be something that we want to restrict it to. As far as, I think there was a comment in one of your, your response letters about still needing relief for cutoff shields for one particular light. Can you, can you tell us which one specifically you're talking about for that?
Yes, if you don't mind just panning down, there was one particular light at the corner of that Strickland, easterly Strickland driveway. It's two, two heads mounted at ninety degree. Currently, it was specified without the shields. I did testify that we are going to agree to update that and fully have shields for, for that particular light fixture. As far as the color temperature, we can also agree to drop it down to three thousand Kelvin just in the spirit of the proximity that we're in.
Yeah, so, and so I think that's important, like the, the house that shields. So everything along the west and the northernly property line, it's going to be shielded to those adjacent property owners?
That's correct.
Okay. And then parking, you talked about, so in accordance with our ordinance, we require fifty-two parking spaces. And how many are you proposing?
Sixty-eight parking spaces.
Sixty-eight parking spaces. What is it without the actual EV credit that you're, that you're providing?
EV, EV credit, we're only getting two stalls out of it, so.
So you're still sixty-six, you're in excess of what's required?
That's correct.
All right. So you talked about the hot box, that's something that's required on a lot of these commercial applications on Route nine. We just asked that it be considered as part of the application so they don't have to come back. It's going to be landscaped and to the satisfaction of the board LT, correct?
We can agree, yes.
Okay, and then the, so we cited it, technically, they're underground, but our, our ordinance says any accessory structures in the front yard, other than like flagpoles, and there's a couple of exceptions, don't require relief. They have, their fueling station is in the technical front yard area on this site where their fueling tanks are in the technical front yard area. So if you're looking at the exhibit, it would be the right-hand side, there's four tanks, yeah. So they're underground, but they're technically in a front yard area, so we cited relief of it. The question that I have is, what, is there diesel fueling proposed with this or is it all?
Low-flow diesel.
Low-flow diesel? Yeah, so the tanks themselves, are they, they're like dual-walled and all that kind of- So the tanks themselves, are they they're like dual-walled and all that kind of stuff?
Yes.
All right. And then the site itself, are you serviced by public water and sewer or going to be serviced by public water and sewer?
Serviced by public water and sewer.
And then the surrounding areas, are they also serviced by public water as well?
To my knowledge, yes.
Okay. And the only reason I ask that is I do know that the board has had in the past, going back to even the early 2000s, some some Wawa's and things coming with underground storage tanks. And there was concerns with residents regarding wells. Obviously, with public water, that's, you know, potentially less of a concern, but let's hear from the public. That's all I have for Mr. Chan. I have some comments regarding the DOT and circulation. Would that be better for your traffic engineer for the onsite circulation?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll hold off on that.
I just have a couple of questions. I noticed that there's no parking spaces for oversized vehicles. So how are you planning on handling an oversized vehicle?
Yeah, so really the calculation for the required number of spaces, we're over that by by some margin. Really, what our thought was, you know, between some of the the driveouts themselves, we're slightly oversized, I think now to 30 feet, previously I think was 25 to 28. And also we are providing an excess of parking stalls themselves. So we wanted to maintain the flexibility for standard vehicles should it need it. But, you know, based on the calculation, there's a surplus. So should a larger vehicle come onsite?
So how exactly would that work? You don't have any pull-through spaces. And I'm not advocating regardless if it's 30 feet or not, oversized vehicles sticking out into the driveout. That's not safe. So like typically, if you want to accommodate an oversized vehicle but not stripe for it, you have pull-through spaces and they take two spaces, one in front of the other. You don't have that on this plan. So how exactly where exactly would, let's say, a landscaper with a trailer, because we see a lot of that here in Howell at these convenience stores, where would they go?
Yeah, the intention would be probably behind the the building here and that's adjacent to the loading zone. We could restripe some of these excess parking spaces into more of a pull-through similar to to that loading space and then modify the curb line to meet that same that same pull-through kind of approach.
I mean, I'm not I have to see that. So, you know, I mean, if that's something that you guys are going to consider, coupled with like the drainage comments and then some DOT comments, I would recommend to the board, if you are to act in the affirmative, and I'm not suggesting that you are, but if you do, then we're talking about preliminary only because there's a lot of things that have to be worked out before I think anything can be done final.
Totally agree. So.
I have a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
Do we have any renderings on the lighting anywhere? I didn't see anything.
Yes, it's a part of the submitted site plan.
For some reason, I couldn't find it, so.
Sure. It is part of the submitted set. Is there a particular area you're looking to?
I was just looking in general for the whole thing because I'm kind of more concerned about on the residential side.
Yeah, yeah. Let me get to my sheet here. It's part of the submitted plan. I think it is sheet C9. I'll just maybe speak to it. But the that previous I spoke about, the 0.5-foot handle, that's more or less hugging the paved limits of our site. And where we where we are proposing the earth berm, the residential buffer, the stormwater basin, also the northern edge of the property is all zero-foot candles. That 0.5 is hugging the proposed limits of our of our site or with the proposed pavement.
Does that does that answer your question?
To an extent.
So what more do you?
I was just I I just, okay, well, I guess for now it answered the question. Thank you.
Jennifer, did you have anything else before we check with the other board members?
Just generally the hours of operation of the store?
That would be for the.
Our next witness is a Quick Check rep.
Okay.
Board members, any other questions?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman. Just real quick, with the demolition of the bank, will there be any change to the elevation of land aside from the retention ditches?
The proposed finished floor for the bank is currently 99 elevation. Let me just make sure of ours, I believe we're a foot lower from the current bank. So not not much change.
Okay. And the petroleum reserve tanks. Charlie talked to that earlier. What what amount of fuel will they be holding when if completely full?
Yeah, so we'll maybe let the Quick Check representative walk through the the fueling tank.
Fahrenheit? How deep will they be down or is that a Quick Check answer as well?
Yeah, they'll be fully underground and it'll be a concrete paved area for a little bit of durability, but fully underground.
Right. How deep?
15 to 20 feet deep.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Anybody else?
I have a couple of questions, Mr. Chan. Mr. Chan, you mentioned EV credits, so two parking spaces. So is that going to be like one charging podium with two different charging outlets on it?
It could be done one that particular way or it could be done on separate pedestals.
Okay. And do you have a proposed size for those chargers yet or?
Not yet.
Okay. And where would they be located?
Currently, as proposed, it would be behind the the store in that loading area on the that row of parking next to the basin, right, right here.
Okay, to 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 the southwest more or less?
To the southwest, yes.
Okay. Because that's now where we're talking about potentially changing the.
Right, so the EV spaces, should we restripe that back area? We can move it to the northern side of the right back here.
Okay. What about tire filling pumps?
So it's in the northeastern corner of the site and that that's there.
Okay. Last question I have for you, is there an entrance on the west side of the building as well as on the east side?
On the western side will be service entrance for loading and such, not a customer fronting entrance.
Okay.
Those are only in the eastern side of the.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Just a quick.
Yes, Glenn. How close to the current Quick Check on Route 9 north will this building be as far as design and layout?
Yeah, maybe we'll let the traffic engineer grab that dimension as he kind of goes to.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair, if I could just, I want to ask a follow-up question to Mr. Grabarakis' question. So the EV charging station regarding like the size, it might have been in context of is it going to be like a level two charger or higher? So it's not going to be like a level one because those are like pointless to put in.
Right.
Agree to a level two or higher?
It'll be a level two or, yeah.
Okay. And then crap, I lost my train of thought. There was there's another one that came up. Oh, sidewalk around the building. So our ordinance, I think, requires a minimum of eight feet and I think you're proposing five to six feet in some areas. Can you provide some context on is that something that's typical for Quick Check sites that that's like a company standard and and how's that going to function and how are pedestrians? Because I think the eight-foot comes from separating the pedestrians from the parking area for safety purposes. So can you provide some testimony in that regard?
Yeah, yeah, the testimony is that is, you know, standard and prototypical to Quick Check layout. You know, previously I indicated there's bollards around the around the building that preserves the full usable five to six feet. The intention is to provide, you know, separation from pedestrians and vehicles bumper overhanging a curb. But in this instance, there are bollards there restricting that. And I had also indicated the entrance for the Quick Check building is sort of in those two notches where the sidewalk itself would be closer to 10, 11, 12 feet wide and usable width as well.
Anything further for this witness? Okay, Sal, will your engineer be available later for a public comment?
Yes.
Okay, because I I think to speed things along for everybody here, I would prefer to hold off public comment till the end and then the public can come up and have their questions and comments all at the same time.
That's fine.
Okay, so at this time, the board is going to take a five-minute break. Matt? Yeah, Matt, we're going to reopen.
The board will now reconvene.
Okay, Sal.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We're now going to call Jennifer Cowald.
Cadwal.
Cadwal, sorry, from Quick Check. You were sworn in, but can you introduce yourself to the board and what your affiliation is and position is with Quick Check, please?
Sure, I've been with Quick Check for six years. I'm the development manager and I work with the real estate managers that find the sites and then I come here and hopefully get them approved.
Okay, so you're familiar with this location and I assume you're familiar with the prototypical Quick Check designs.
Yes.
Correct?
Yep.
Okay, so first generally describe for the board the the operational details of this location if it were approved and developed.
Okay, so we would be open 24 hours a day, 365 days a year. We would employ 40 to 50 people. The maximum shift is usually eight to 10 people. The minimum shift is typically three with two people on the inside and one in the outside at the gas pumps. We have our deliveries, which are Aaron explained, the got the front where the fuel is. That would be a WB50. And then also in the back of the store would be also WB50s. The ones in the front, we usually get deliveries seven to eight times a week. It's on demand, so there's a system that just triggers when the amount of fuel gets low enough. But it's typically seven to eight times a week. And then in the back, our WB50 deliveries are usually the same, seven to eight times a week. And then we also have box trucks that show up. Those are usually more like four or five a day, but they come periodically during the day and it's more like your Cokes and Pepsis and chips and things like that. They all use the back door or they wheel it, you know, they have a hand cart. They turn their trucks off, there's no idling, so there's minimal noise, garbage. So we have trash and we have recycling. Recycling's picked up by waste management and it's single or string, single stream. So they put the cardboard and any recyclables together and then they sort them out at the waste management facility. That usually comes two to three times a week, depending on, you know, how busy our store is, pretty much is what that runs on. Offering wise, we have obviously coffee, we have specialty coffees, we have our freshly prepared foods. We also have packaged goods, like packaged food, eggs, salads, like quick grab and go. And then we also have, you know, the variety of chips and candy and crackers and cookies and lots of different drinks, fountain drinks, shakes. And then we also have convenience items and like, you know, minor medical things, Band-Aids, aspirin, things like that. The I believe in one of the review letters, there were discussed the generator. So we're not proposing a permanent generator here, but we do have a contract with a company. This came after, I think, Sandy, we decided we should do this. So we basically they're on call and we have a transfer switch on the back of our building. So if we need one, they bring it in on a trailer, they just park it in the loading area, it fits in there and then they just hook it up to the transfer switch. It's kind of seamless that way. And then, you know, we talked about the the underground storage tanks. So those are roughly about 18 feet deep is how far we bury them. There's four 20,000 gallon compartments. They are double, they're double-walled fiberglass and there's a brine that's in between the walls. So if there's a leak on the inside wall or the outside wall, immediately it sets an alert off in our store and at the home office also. So we would know. And there's we have emergency shut-offs at the canopy and also in the building. So if there's any, you know, something goes wrong with our pumps and somebody's pumping or they can shut it off immediately.
And is there any products sold at the canopy level or it's all within the store?
Typically, it's all within the store. We will do windshield wiper fluid during that kind of season when everybody needs it and they're just out there. But we don't, we don't typically like have oil or anything. It's just the most is usually windshield wiper fluid.
That's really all we had, Mr. Chair.
Yes, Matt. You have diesel there, yes?
We do, we have low-flow diesel. It's very slow pumping. Semi-trucks do not want to.
I'm a diesel guy, so I know. But do you have that diesel exhaust fluid out out in the front or do you keep that in the store?
Oh, the the DEF?
The DEF, yeah.
We actually, we get it in the store.
Okay. Thank you. Jen, Charlie? No, okay. Any other board members? Mike?
Will you be selling propane tanks or renting propane tanks?
No.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I apologize. Do you have any, Mr. Ryan brought up the propane, is there any kind of like permanent propane like on the back of the building for the use in the building or anything like that?
No. We get natural gas from the street.
Okay.
Okay.
We'll now call our architect. Thank you. Oliver, again, state your name for the record and then please place your credentials on the record.
Sure, will do. Good evening again, everyone. My name's Oliver Young, Y-O-U-N-G. I'm a principal at GK and A Architects. Our business address is 36 Ames Avenue in Rutherford, New Jersey. I hold a bachelor's degree in architecture from Rensselaer Polytechnic Institute located in Troy, New York. I have practiced in the field of architecture for over 25 years. I have been licensed in the state of New Jersey since 2006. My license is current and I have appeared at over 70 planning and zoning boards throughout the state and been accepted at all of them.
Okay, we accept your qualifications. Thank you.
And you've worked on Quick Check projects elsewhere in the state, have you not?
Yes, numerous Quick Check projects.
You submitted an architectural rendering, John, I think we have one page, which I guess we should mark A 25?
Correct.
Can you just run through for the board the materials and the type of design and whether this is prototypical of Quick Check?
Sure, very briefly, this is a colorized version of the building and fuel canopy elevations prepared by our firm dated December 5, 2024. Just touching upon the building dimensions very quickly. As Mr. Chan mentioned, it's 5,670 square feet. It's 77 foot wide by 68 foot deep. At the front of the building, which is east facing Route 9, it's the elevation on the top, we have a bump out and that bump out is 53 foot six wide by eight foot six deep and that consists of entry vestibules on the north and south ends. And that entry vestibule, those vestibules flank the customer checkout area, which takes up the rest of that bump out. So the floor plan itself is typical of a Quick Check. The customer area is at the core or what I call the center of the building. And the perimeter of the building is the service and support, such as bathrooms, office, walk-in cooler and freezer, then storage and prep areas. We also do have a small accessory seating area in the northeast corner. I believe it's about 10 seats total inside. And Mr. Chan took an approximate percentage of 3%. I checked the math today. The square footage of that seating area is approximately 140 square feet, being conservative. That's 2.5% of the overall floor plan square footage. Moving on to the elevation design itself, the massing, the main overall height of the building on all four sides is 23 foot six inches above the finished floor. At that bump out portion at the front of the building, that height steps up to 27 feet six inches. And then we have a tower at the southeast corner of the building that tops off at 32 feet to the highest point. For reference, that tower element which you see in green is nine foot four wide by eight foot six deep. All these heights that I mentioned, these are to the parapet, they're not to the actual roof line. There's a reason for that. This is a Quick Check, it's a convenience store with food inside and we have a significant amount of rooftop equipment. We have three heating and cooling units, walk-in condenser, makeup air unit, plumbing flues and exhaust fans. And the parapet, which is on all four sides of the building, is designed at a height to adequately screen all of these items from public view. Moving on to the materials and colors, we have two prevalent materials on this building, the first being a brick in a red finish and then we have an EPIS system higher up in both a medium and light gray finish. The brick which you see on all four sides of the building acts as the base of the building, The brick which you see on all four sides of the building acts as the base of the building, starting at grade continuing up to a height of 12 foot six inches where it's capped off with a brown stone coping. The EPIS system in the two gray colors continues above that and it's topped off on all four sides with a 10 inch high white metal coping. At the front of the building, the topmost elevation on the page, that brick tops off at three foot six inches. We have glazing sitting on top of that continuing up to a height of 11 foot nine inches and the storefront framing surrounding that glazing is a medium bronze color. Once we hit the height of 11 foot nine, we have a light green canopy. It's flat, it projects out over that bump out by only one foot four inches. However, on the right-hand side of that front elevation, which is the northeast corner, that canopy projects out and over the customer entrance area on that side. So it's a nine foot three inch deep canopy and you'll see a couple rods tying back to the building, holding that canopy up. That canopy does wrap around the north elevation, you'll see, it's the second drawing on the left-hand side and it dies into the brown stone coping. Above the canopy on the front elevation, we have additional glazing, however, that's opaque glazing. It's spandrel in a light gray finish and that tops off at a height of 16 feet. From 16 feet to the top of the building there, which is 27 foot six, we have the light gray EPIS capped with the white metal coping. On the south side of the bump out, which is the left-hand side of the front elevation, we have that green tower. There are custom green metal panels and a Quick Check green. Then on the northeast corner of the building itself, above that flat canopy, we have more spandrel glazing. A little bit higher though is an accent area that tops off at 18 foot four inches and you'll see the glazing wrap around the corner on the north elevation. And that glazed area at that corner, that's where the seating is. We want to highlight the seating and provide visual, visual continuity between interior and exterior. Moving down to the bottom of the page, we presented two typical views of the fueling canopy. The minimum, minimum dimension from grade to the underside of the canopy is 14 foot six inches. The canopy itself is three foot high. We have an eight inch light green band on all four sides of the canopy at the bottom and we have the darker Quick Check green above. Both of these greens match the two greens you see on the building. Additionally, the support columns for the canopy are brick, they're two foot by two foot and it's the same exact brick we use on the building. So the colors and materials between the fuel canopy and the building, they are consistent. I will touch upon the signage briefly. I know Mr. Chan testified to it earlier. On the building itself, we propose four signs. This building, it's the newer Quick Check prototype, which our firm was tasked with designing around 2018, 2019. When we designed this prototype, what we did with the signage was we purposely split the Quick Check from the queue. If you look at older Quick Check buildings, let's say the run on Route 9 North in Howell, you'll see the Quick Check and the queue are together. In this day and age with the new world of social media abbreviations and Twitter and hashtags, we saw the queue as the defining element in the building and we purposely designed the tower on the building to carry that queue. The detrimental effect of that is we essentially create a lot of sign variances in towns we go to because we've taken one sign and split it in two. So for reference purposes, the Quick Check sign you see on the front elevation, it's 17 foot nine wide by three foot three tall, 57.7 square feet. Then the queue at the top of the tower there, it's four foot 10 wide by four foot eight high and that's 22.6 square feet. We're proposing the same signs on the same dimensions on the south elevation facing Strickland Road. We have the Quick Check on the wall facade and then we have the queue on that corner of the tower. So you have the top, corner tower element with the queue on each side. There are additionally two fuel canopy signs proposed also. That's Quick Check in a white material with the green background on the east and south facades, both of which we've rendered here. For reference, those fuel canopy signs are 10 foot seven and a half inches wide by two foot one and a half inches high each and they're 22.6 square feet each. So that covers everything.
That's all the architectural testimony, Mr. Chair.
Okay, Jennifer?
I don't have a problem with the building at all. I also don't have a problem with the wall signs, the queue and the Quick Check on both of those facades. I do, again, reiterate, the lack of a need to have them on the canopy. I think the color coding and the branding and the monument sign and the four facade signs, I think the public could generally get the picture that this is a Quick Check. So I would submit that those signs that are on the canopy are unnecessary.
Well...
And just for the record, we made 7-Eleven take their, they just have striping on that canopy across the street. We made them take their signs off the canopy, so that's a pretty consistent message, I'll be honest with you.
Thank you, Chair. Our planner will address that. She's going to discuss it with the client before she gets up here and we'll, while we're done.
Okay, table that. Charlie?
All right.
Board members?
Sorry to ask another question.
Do any of your new buildings have a covered canopy leading from the gas pumps to the door of the store?
None of them do. The fuel canopy is a separate structure from the building.
Okay. Just a suggestion so people don't get wet.
Umbrellas. Okay.
We're going to now call our traffic engineer?
Sounds good.
Thank you, Oliver. Don't go anywhere. And all of our witnesses are going to stay here for the public, so no, no one leave. And John, would you again state your name for the record by whom you were employed and then place your credentials on the record? We're seeking to have you qualified as a traffic expert.
Of course. Name again is John Corak, that's spelled C-O-R-A-K. I'm also with Stonefield Engineering and Design and my office is at 92 Park Avenue in Rutherford, New Jersey. I'm a licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey. I've seen my Bachelor of Science in Civil Engineering from the College of New Jersey. I'm an expert in the field of traffic and transportation engineering. I've prepared over 250 traffic studies for land development applications. I've testified before over 100 boards in the state and I also serve as Board Traffic Engineer for about three or four municipalities as well.
Okay, we accept your qualifications, thank you.
Thank you. In your office, I guess two things. One is there was a discussion about a pre-app meeting with DOT and then the DOT application I'm going to need you to touch on and then also what report, your traffic impact report, what you did to prepare that report and what your conclusions were.
Okay, great. I'm going to start with the, the traffic report and then as I work through that report and work my way to the site design and the access, then I'll touch on the DOT element of, of the application. And I think it would probably be helpful just for right now at the aerial.
So A21 is the aerial.
Yep. So as that's being brought up, we prepared a, a traffic impact study for the Quick Check application. We were also traffic engineers on the 7-Eleven application across the street. So we have been out at these sites at this intersection numerous times over the years as part of the different approvals processes for the locations. Specific to this application, along with our field visit to the site, we did conduct traffic counts at the intersection of Route 9 and Strickland Road. We conducted those counts during the peak periods of the roadway network, which happened to coincide with your peak Quick Check demand. So that's from 7:00 AM to 9:00 AM, from 4:00 PM to 7:00 PM, those are on a typical weekday. And then on Saturday, we look at the midday period, 11:00 AM to 2:00 PM. And so, so those traffic counts were conducted in accordance, in accordance with industry standards. Of course, we, we know and understand that Route 9 is a major thoroughfare, not only in Howell, but within the state of New Jersey. Through this section carries about 45,000 vehicles per day. So it's, it's highly traveled, two lanes in each direction. Depending on the intersection, you may get a third lane for a jug handle or, you know, other turning maneuver, but through here, about two lanes each direction, still carrying, you know, north of 40,000 to 45,000 vehicles per day. Strickland Road, it's a collector roadway, one lane of travel in each direction, carries about 5,000 cars per day. It is, you know, certainly a mechanism, a means for mostly residential, you know, houses and residential units to access Route 9 and some of the other, you know, roadways that, you know, exist mostly west of the site itself. As part of our analysis, what we do with that existing traffic data that we collected, we establish the baseline condition or the existing condition and what we conduct is a level of service analysis. And this level of service analysis, it is a qualitative measure to assess the, the traffic, really the traffic service on the roadway network. And for this particular study, we look at intersections specifically and the delay experienced by vehicles at that intersection. From our study results, existing conditions, the overall intersection here operates, I guess I'll back up one second on the grading scale for level of service, I think that's important, that level of service is assigned a letter grade A through F. And, you know, a school report card, you're really shooting for all As, maybe As and Bs. With traffic engineering, something that's level of service A or level of service B tends to be, you know, operating well and could be overdesigned. What we shoot for when we design is for levels of service Cs and Ds and then when we're down to Es and Fs, that's when we need to either acknowledge a need for mitigation or an understanding of why there is that kind of delay. So it, it's not that we're all shooting for As and Bs or else we have, you know, overly built out roadways, but really shooting for, for Cs and Ds, but for the most part. But getting into the existing conditions level of service, the overall intersection today operates at level of service B as in void during each of those peak periods. Really that's driven by the traffic on Route 9. The DOT controls the signal, they prioritize their Route 9 traffic volumes, which are the heaviest volumes. So on average, you know, the, the average delay at the traffic signal is, is a B. On the side street, Strickland Road, what you see are mostly Cs and Ds. So we're still within appropriate design standards, but, you know, the DOT doesn't prioritize Strickland Road. They don't prioritize the municipal roadways at their intersections, they prioritize their own roadways. One other thing of note on the Strickland Road eastbound approach, so that is along our site frontage, someone making a left turn from Strickland Road onto Route 9 North, there's a small left turn bay that's there today. Very frequently, that left turn stack goes beyond that left turn bay. You know, it has the curb width there, curb to curb to support that, but it's just something that, that we noticed and when we were talking with DOT, we're looking to remedy with the proposed, you know, Quick Check development. So that sort of takes care of the existing condition traffic volumes, that's our baseline. Now what we look at is to the future, where we look at what we call a no build condition. That's what does the traffic look like without Quick Check there? All right? And so that means, one, we want to account for a, a general background growth in the area as stipulated by DOT. And two, we want to account for other projects that are, you know, in the vicinity on the Route 9 corridor that specifically would add traffic volume to the roadway network and need to be accounted for above and beyond, you know, the, the generalized background growth rate. And so our traffic study included four of those such developments, included Squan River Commons, it included Elton Plaza, which is the La Waa Chick-fil-A Taco Bell site, although that is substantially built out. So there's, it's a little bit of double counting going on there. Included Howell Medical, which is 65,000 square feet of office space and then the Fort Plains Residential Development with 319 residential units. So a number of different types and, you know, locales of pending developments, developments that, you know, at the time of traffic counts, may not have been operating or in the case of Elton Plaza, even were operating but wanted to make sure that we've accounted for everything. And then on top of that, we add the 2% background growth. What we do there is then we conduct another level of service analysis. Generally speaking, the levels of service are consistent with the existing condition, but we do note that some of the Strickland Road approaches, you see some of the Cs shift to Ds, you see some of the Ds shift to Es. So you, we're starting to get to the point where, you know, it, it may be something to look at as traffic volumes continue to increase. Now, we've got the no build, now let's move to the build condition, which is with the Quick Check itself. And to do that, we forecast traffic generated by Quick Check. We did that in line with the NJ DOT standards. They, they cite the Institute of Transportation Engineers Trip Generation Manual. I'm sure many of traffic engineers come before this board and talked about that manual, but essentially it is, is a data set collected by other traffic engineers and published by the Institute of Transportation Engineers in order to quantify traffic demand from different types of developments. And so with this type of development, specifically the convenience store gas station model, what they found is that yes, it's a high generator of traffic, but on average, for an average site, 76% of the traffic coming in and out of the site was already on the highway and is not new to the area. And so that greatly reduces the impact of that traffic as you, as you spread out further from the site. These are already cars that were on their commute, they're already, you know, on their way to soccer practice, on their way to XYZ, you know, trip that they're making passing the site today. And so that, that helps, that helps absorb some of the impact, but we do recognize that a Quick Check is still a, a high generator of traffic and that's part of their business As part of that, then we take that traffic volume, route it to the roadway network. We do so twofold. One is based on the roadway volumes and that, you know, captures that 76%. And then the other is with the gravity model, where we're plotting out the, the populations and densities of census tracts within a radius and routing how they get to the site and what directions they would take. After that, we move into our final level of service analysis. That is the, the build out condition level of service analysis. And what we see from the build out condition is that generally, the, the levels of service, they're, they're close to the same. Some As go to Bs, some Bs go to Cs, but that eastbound Strickland left turn, the on-rig and left turn on Strickland to get onto Route 9, those delays increase to the point where on average you'd be waiting about two cycle lengths. You'd probably sit at the light twice before getting through. And that is a condition that is above and beyond what is out there today or what we forecast in the no build. So that's a condition that we as traffic engineers look to solve, look to mitigate in order to, you know, establish, you know, a, a development that doesn't have an impact on the roadway network. And we've looked at a number of things with DOT, this is starting in the pre-application process and then with our application that we've submitted. The first piece is of course lengthening that left turn bay. So we want to provide a full stacking area for that left turn lane. It would push it not quite to the site driveway locate, the, the western site driveway location as we get to the site plan, but lengthen it to provide a dedicated stacking area so that way, you know, there's no confusion and, and when the light turns green, you know, you know who's in the through lane and who's in the left turn lane. The other piece is an actual timing adjustment at the traffic signal. And this is something that we commonly do with DOT as part of applications. It's also something that DOT frequently does on their corridors as they collect new counts, new data and, and, you know, adjust their traffic signal timings to account for, you know, new trends, if you will. And so by shifting some of that time that is excess to the Route 9 corridor and providing more time for Strickland Road, we're able to essentially bring back that left turn movement, back into compliance, back into consistency with the existing condition and not have an impact to the rest of the roadway network, you know, with the development itself. And so that is, that is our current proposal with the DOT to mitigate that intersection. And with that mitigation, this bud that would not have an adverse impact to the surrounding roadway network. Now, also discussed at the, the DOT pre-app and I think probably a good time to go to, is it A22? The, the colorized rendering?
Yes.
If I might, Mr. Corak, while they're bringing that up, how much time are you getting back from the light off of Route 9 to put on Strickland Road?
Um, it's about seven seconds.
And how much of an impact of the two light cycle wait is that going to take away?
Oh, it, it cuts it in half. You're, you're back to existing condition.
There's no way.
Okay. Is that an automated computerized process, the, the timing of the lights or is that set permanently from 7 o'clock to 9 o'clock, they're going to extend it to this amount of time or is it, the system be able to read the amount of traffic and automatically adjust itself?
Yeah, so, so the way the system works out there is that it, it operates within a specific parameter. So in the morning, for example, if you were to, to watch from the time that Route 9 goes yellow and then goes through a full cycle to it turning yellow again, that would be 105 seconds, you know, on your stopwatch. And then within that, the, the side street, the Strickland Road approach has detection to it that as long as there are still vehicles there, it continues to get green up to a certain maximum. What we're looking at is extending that maximum to be, you know, seven seconds per site. What we're looking at is extending that maximum to be, you know, seven seconds per cycle. So out of the 105, an additional seven seconds, and that, you know, allows for the flow of traffic to make its way onto Route 9 North.
Thank you.
Mr. Corrick, so...
Yes.
So existing conditions, nothing gets built there as it sits today. What's the, for that turning movement there you're talking about, the left-hand turn from Strickland to Route 9 North, what's the delay in the level of service?
One second. So the existing condition, depending on the peak hour...
Worst case.
Worst case was an E, 61 seconds.
And what, when is that, the Saturday?
That was the, that was the evening, actually, because they have a, it has a longer cycle length than the evening. It's 140 seconds. So you're just waiting there longer, even though there's less volume.
Okay. So, and then you said you also analyzed the 2026 no build. So that's, your site hasn't been built, but projecting in NJDOT growth rates, but then also development that's been approved in the vicinity of the project. What is that condition, level of service and the delay?
Yeah, so in the evening, this is a little bit of an anomaly, but this is how it would actually function, because that eastbound left approach in the evening doesn't get full capacity. When you start adding in additional volume to it, it gets a greater rate of green time. So that would actually come back to a D. But that's not the critical period. The critical period is either the morning or the Saturday. So that, in the morning or Saturday, we'd be looking at, in the morning, it's an E, 60.3 seconds, and then in the Saturday, it's an E, 61.8.
Okay. Now, in the build condition, what is that, what's the worst case for that turning movement?
It's an F at 136.8.
Okay. But that's without mitigation, so that's without signal timing adjustments, but then also providing that expanded left turning lane for queuing?
Correct.
Now, you've had meetings and you discussed that with DOT. What has been, is that something that they're amenable to or receptive to, or is that something that they're saying absolutely not? Because I think that's, obviously, any potential approval by the board is going to be conditioned on DOT approval, but, you know, I would think if this board is going to act favorably on the application, like, that would be, the mitigation needs to be something that's going to be a certainty and a condition of the approval. So I kind of want to, for the board's perspective, what's their current status on that as part of the review process?
Yeah, so the formal review process, we've submitted, we've been deemed complete, we're awaiting the formal technical comments. Prior to that submittal, we had a pre-application meeting with the DOT. It included their traffic engineering unit, and we knew going into that meeting that we were going to need this type of mitigation, that, you know, timing adjustments would be needed. And we also had done queuing studies to understand that left turn lane extension. And both of those ideas were presented to the DOT and received favorably.
So can I just interject?
Yeah.
Sorry, Charlie, for interrupting. So you said you did the traffic across the street, right?
Correct.
And that had a write-out driveway coming out to Strickland, right?
It had a write-in coming off of Strickland, and we had a pre-application meeting with the DOT, and they...
They said no, right?
They did reneg on that, yeah.
Yeah, so I agree with Charlie, like, this needs to be resolved to some level of certainty before you guys do anything, because that was, and Matt can tell you, that was, it was problematic for us on that application, because it was after the fact. And then it required zoning changes and other things to come back. They had to come back to the board. It was a big deal. So I agree with Charlie, this needs to be resolved.
Yeah, and we agree with your suggestion that if the board were to act favorably, it would only be preliminary, and final would be a condition that we do exactly what was testified to.
I guess the question the board's going to have to weigh, Sal, in all fairness, is, is this important enough to impact your decision on the use itself? Or do you feel like it's a site plant issue, which can be separated between preliminary and final?
I believe it's the use.
Yeah, 100%.
So...
Mr. Chairman, Tom, he's talking about the left turn onto Route 9 North, but in the morning, if I'm coming into that store, I'd have to get off onto Wykoff Road and then go onto Strickland Road and then go across. How many cars could line up on Strickland Road between that light and Wykoff Road, right where the, behind the Woolly Seafood?
That's on the, I guess we can go back to there.
If you're coming on northbound, you're on, if I'm driving northbound on Route 9, which most people do in the morning...
Yeah.
You'd have to get off at Wykoff Road before to make the turn. There's no jug handle there.
Correct.
Before the 7-Eleven.
Yeah, I mean, I guess...
How many cars can stack up on that stretch of Strickland Road between the light and the corner?
The straight through, what you're talking about, right?
Yeah, the, between Wykoff, right in front of the villages and then the light.
That's in front of the 7-Eleven.
In front of the 7-Eleven, correct.
I'm trying to, like, scale it in my head, because I don't have a direct measurement for you.
Not many, it's like four miles, because I've seen it, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
You didn't study that to get to our... So the question is, if we're heading north on 9 and they want to go to this quick check, what impact does that have on that exit to get to Strickland to cross 9?
Correct.
Yeah, so just from Google Earth, right, it's approximately 170 feet from the stop bar at the traffic light to the stop bar at Strickland and Wykoff. That's like eight or nine cars, you know, if they're 18 or 20 foot length, so that gives you how many can actually queue there, waiting to come across. I guess the question would be for the applicant, their traffic engineer, right, like, quick check with a, with a gas station, you know, if you're northbound on Route 9, are you going to use the 7-Eleven, or what's in proximity north and south of this as far as convenience stores? Like, if you're going north on Route 9 and you need to get gas, or you're needing to stop, get a convenience store, are you going to do that Wykoff to come across to get to the quick check? You know, maybe someone, there's a brand loyalty to quick check or something like that, but, you know, I would venture, you know, some people, it's, you know, whatever's the quickest thing on my route is what I'm going to stop at, so, you know, that's a question I would have for them, is what else is on the corridor on the northbound side? Because that, you know, we know there's a 7-Eleven across the street, but 7-Eleven doesn't offer all the same things that a quick check does, but what else is on the northbound side and what's in proximity?
That's a good point.
I can answer that.
Yes.
So obviously, of course, 7-Eleven, right? A lot of times you think a quick check is coffee, you have Starbucks, the next property up, but then continuing further north, about a mile and a half, is the Wawa Project, the Elton Plaza site, and that's on the northbound side as well. And that's probably the closest similar competitor. As you, you know, before getting to the site...
There's another quick check.
Yeah, I mean, there's another quick check about, you know, four and a, it's about four and a half miles to the south on Route 9 northbound, but, you know, as part of your commute on Route 9, that could very well be a part of that commute. You also have another Wawa to the south, you also have a Delta gas station to the south.
Lukaw.
That are, those are all on Route 9 North. And so I think the brand loyalty is really the only customer that's in rush hour going to veer off of Route 9 North, come across, go to quick check, and then wait and continue to go back on Route 9 North.
Yeah, I think we're going to have to address a little bit of these concerns, because one big thing that we have to look into, this is not the bank. We're not, we're going to have a lot more deliveries, and we're going to have a, you know, oil tanker trucks coming in. So when they get, they come out, there's issues, I think more issues with, you know, trying to get out if there's too many cars. And that, I think that's going to have to be addressed.
Yeah, so one of the things I can say is, having sat at a number of pre-construction meetings with, like, Jack, um, sorry, Halt County Police Department, just talking about, you know, projects that are in the queue, or, you know, capital projects and traffic and things like that, I know there has been a number of accidents and fatalities in this vicinity, particularly related to pedestrians. There's the bus depot on the, on the east side of the road here. There is a bus stop right in front of this property. I think what happens is you have people getting left off the bus who parked in the commuter lot, and then they're crossing across the street. You know, that left turn movement from Strickland is particularly concerning is because if there's a delay there, that creates impatience with drivers, and anytime drivers are impatient, they're more inclined to go when the last second or two is in the yellow or in the red, when pedestrians are still trying to cross. So I think that's something that needs to be, we need a better answer in regards to what the DOT is on that, on that mitigation. And certainly, and I guess it's for the traffic engineer, is there, so when there's a red at the light, how much common time is there for the red for all, for both sides of the signalization?
Typically, the DOT minimum is three seconds. I would think that's the same here, but let me just double check.
And the follow-up to that would be, is there a maximum, and can you request the maximum with any kind of timing improvements?
Yeah, so the maximum, it's really based on travel speed and intersection length, that essentially a vehicle has entered the intersection, giving it enough time to clear.
Well, we're really talking about giving people enough time to cross the street.
Right, I understand. I'm explaining the maximums and what DOT bases them on. Now, is there an opportunity to make improvements for the pedestrian realm? Certainly, there's lead pedestrian intervals that start the pedestrian crossing before green time is even allocated to, you know, to the side street. There's a number of different, you know, upgrades and solutions that could be implemented, yes.
Yeah. I think for the board's perspective, we need, like, a little bit of a firmer answer, right? Because what happens is people getting dropped off at that bus spot on the southbound direction, they're getting, they're pushing the pet symbol to get it, they're, you know, they're walking across the street to get to the other side of Route 9. You know, they get the walk symbol and then the left turn town, nah, left turn lane on Strickland to make the left, they also get their green, right? Those pedestrians are walking across the southbound lane and then coinciding with those people making the left-hand turn, you know what I mean? There needs to be more of a lag, if there can be, so those pedestrians can get acrossed, you know? It's, and it's, it is, you know, it's Route 9, it's 100 foot wide probably right of way, so...
Think about, think about how long the pedestrian light is in front of the Ivy League, when it goes and the people are crossing the road, and how long that light turn stays red on Route 9 to allow the pedestrians to cross over Route 9 at that location. It's a long red to get people across the road. I also, can I just jump in a second?
Yeah.
Can you go through those projects again that you looked at, because I think you're missing a couple?
Okay. Let's see, it was the Squon River Commons, which is the residential project just south of the site, kind of just south of the Wykoff Mills Road, spur, if you will. Elton Plaza, which is the Wawa site.
So that's in Friedhold, right?
Yes, in Friedhold. And Howell Medical Investors, that's on Route 9 North to the south of here, that's the 65,000 square foot medical office building. And then FP Howell, which is on Fort Plains Road, 319 unit multifamily.
So there's a couple that got approved at the planning board. One is called Howell 360.
Okay.
It's basically at the jug across from the U-Haul building.
Okay.
And there's like 300 some odd units in there. There's another big project on, it goes from Casino to West Farms, it's like 500 units there. And then, what was the other?
Portable housing in the area?
That's what I'm, well...
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, the other one was FP Howell on Sunnyside.
Yeah, you have that one.
Yeah.
Okay. Those are the, those are two, those are big projects that will most likely dump a lot of cars. Well, one is directly on Route 9, the other is not that far east, and so, you know, the cars are going to dump out onto Route 9 as well. So that's, those are, you know, almost 1,000 units in that immediate area.
Yeah, we'll, we'll put in the request for, you know, any documentation on it, and then we'll look to incorporate. Yeah.
Mr. Corrick, another question about the signal timing equipment there at the intersection. Sounds like you're pretty familiar with it. Would you say it's state-of-the-art, or would you say it's kind of older? My assumption is it's been there a while, it's probably, I know some of these newer systems are highly functional and allow you the ability to do a lot more with them than some of the older systems. How would you rate the system that's there now?
It's a fairly standard assembly, right? It's a two-phase system, so there's no lead arrows, right? There's no overlap phases or, you know, unique, what we call ITS features, Intelligent Transportation Systems. So it runs, you know, on the older end, but it's still a fairly standard build.
Okay. So we talked about giving people better time, more functionality with regard to setting the timing for the left turn lane onto Route 9 North, and then also giving people more time to walk across the highway. Would a newer system allow you more options to accomplish those goals?
It could, but it would be somewhat limited, and the reason for the limitation is not so much in the system, but in the way the DOT is operating Route 9 as a whole, in that we need to keep basically our cycle lengths consistent from one intersection to the next so they can maintain their progression and their coordination between the signals.
Okay. If there was at any time a limitation that didn't allow you to reach the goals you wanted to, to make this a smoother-running intersection with regard to pedestrian traffic, and again, that left turn lane, which seems to be one of the bigger issues, would the applicant be open to upgrading the equipment at that intersection?
I believe it would depend on the scale and what the improvement is, right? Of course, it has to make, you know, financial sense, but generally, we see that, you know...
Okay.
Upgrades occur at quick check applications, yeah.
Okay. One more quick question regarding the egress onto Strickland. You have those two entrance exits there. The exit to the east on Strickland, so I guess that would be the southeast, there's no left turn onto Strickland from that exit?
Correct.
The other one does allow the left turn, though?
Yes.
Okay. All right.
Thank you. To follow up that question, so of the two driveways, the easternmost one, you said the egress has the left turn, no left turn restriction. Coming in, it can be right in, going westbound, but also left in, going eastbound on Strickland. Have you, have you talked to DOT? Are they going to be amenable to that left turn coming in from Strickland?
Yeah, on the DOT end, certainly the left out is problematic. The left in with the left turn bay is still undecided with DOT. And if there was, if it needed to have all the left turn entrance be to the west, you know, that is acceptable to them, you know, that much, but it's possible they come back and say restrict the left in.
Yeah, I mean, to me, I think that would be something that we would want to see, putting all the movements to the far driveway to the west. Just with the left turn queue lane, and when you're adding more turning movements from that, I think it just creates more confusion and more potential for conflicts. And certainly pushing it further west of the intersection, I think is, would be a positive. That would, that would certainly be my recommendation. And then ultimately, you know, it'd be subject to DOT review and approval. I know there's, like, I'm thinking down in Barnegat, Wawa Office 67, they put in some of like the yellow, like, posts, you know, between the double yellow to stop that turning movement. That might be also something that's warranted, but I think technically, even though Strickland west of this is our right of way because of the jug handle, that's technically still DOT right of way. That would be my recommendation, but ultimately DOT would have to review and approve that as well. Is that something the applicant would be amenable to looking into?
We'd be amenable to look into it, but the word of caution, DOT does not like those. They're a maintenance issue for them. We have, we have been told no in the past, and we have had towns put them up anyway. So...
How about like a, like a curbed median, or like a amenable curb island or something separating so that, so you physically can't make that turning movement?
Yeah, it would, it would require widening of the curb lines there. That was, but, you know, physically, it could fit if you, you have to widen out Strickland Road.
But you have frontage on Strickland Road, and you could do some of that widening along your frontage if you needed to.
Correct, we do, we do have frontage there, yes.
Yeah. So, I mean, I think there's a couple different ways to skin the cat here. You know, I don't know if we're going to finish this up tonight. It sounds like the board, the left turning movement's kind of a touchy issue for you for the use. So if this is something where we're not going to get wrapped up tonight, I think it would be, you know, in the applicant's best interest and in the interest of the board to have them investigate that further and come back with some potential solutions for our consideration.
I totally agree. I would like to just take a brief two minutes. I want to confer with our professionals, then I'll talk to you, Sal, and then we can see how we're going to go. see how we're going to go. Okay? So, we're going to take a two-minute break.
Can you confer with us as well? Can we speak?
Yeah, so we're, yeah, yeah.
Board's got a break for two minutes, thank you.
Okay, Matt, we're going to reconvene.
The board will reconvene?
I conferred my professionals and the applicant's attorney. What we are going to do is, we're not going to make any decision tonight because we need more information. Obviously, there's some concerns. I do not feel it necessary for your planner to come up at this time and we'll wait to get the testimony in on the next meeting. However, the public, I would like you the opportunity to come up and speak. And if you have any questions for the architect or the operator, get them out of the way because I do not feel it's necessary for them to come back. I'm not concerned about that as much as the traffic issue, the engineering possibly, and the planner. So, at this time, we will open up the public.
I'll make the motion, Mr. Chair.
Second. Go on, favor.
Aye.
Yep.
Matt?
If anyone from the public would like to speak on this application, please come forward.
And Mr. Chair, we're going to take questions and comments?
Yes, we will do that. And again, anybody in the public, if you have any questions for the architect or the operator, you'd want to ask them now, okay? And the planner will come back and you will have an opportunity to ask questions next time if there's additional testimony, so. But we'd like to hear from you, so go ahead.
Thank you. My name is Sheri and I apparently have a home that is where their loading dock's going to be.
Okay, we have to swear in first.
We need your full, full name and address on the screen.
I do apologize.
No worries.
My name is Sheri, S-H-E-R-I-E, Young, Y-E-U-N-G.
Okay, and your address, please?
Eight Field Crest Way, Freehold, New Jersey, 07728.
And raise your hand. Do you swear from the testimony you're about to give? This matters the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
And John, before she begins, can you put up 822, the colored rendering, so that if you want to point out? Okay, does that help you?
Um, sure, not a problem. Well, I don't see it yet.
So, Route 9 is on the right?
Right, I'm behind where those flowers are, where you have the flower bed, yes. My house is right behind you. The one with the brown, yes, that one, no, the next one, the one with the pool, yes, that one with the fish, no, next one, yes, that's my house, okay? Then my sister's house is also right next door, then my brother's house is right there, and then my girlfriend's house is also right there. So, we're in the same cul-de-sac. My husband is ill, he does not get to sleep well, he has a permanent disability. Now, with your loading dock, it's going to make a lot of noise, that's number one, and it's going to disrupt his sleep because it's hard enough for him to get sleep as is, okay? And then on top of it, we have so many gas stations. Is it really necessary for you to put in another one? We have a big one across the street that does not have anyone's backyard, it has a roadway. So, it separates the other units from the 7-11. But this one impacts all the homes in that cul-de-sac. And all my neighbors are here, that's in that cul-de-sac. So, you don't realize that when you have 68 extra cars, number one, you're going to bring in people that may have illicit activity because you're open 24 hours? Number two, is it really necessary for you to have even more gas station? And then with your EV station, which 7-11 also, they also have one? I was counting, I have a list here of how many gas station moving up and down. You also have a quick check down a little further south of, on the northbound side in Howell, coming upward. I understand you want to make your business, but you're having people cut across. It's bad enough to cut across, coming down across Route 9 to get onto Strickland. It's bad enough for us because you have one turn lane, one that goes straight. So, when you go straight, we also have to take into consideration the cars that's turning from the southbound side to turn in front of the bus lane to get on. So, that's a merging lane. So, in reality, we don't have two lanes on Strickland. So, therefore, you're going to have extra traffic on every aspect. And then you're thinking of extending the turn lane so that you can make that left turn. Do you want to come to my, my driveway, is that it? It, it doesn't even make sense, it's short enough as is. The guy that lives right next to your loading dock is here. So, what's he supposed to do? How's he supposed to get out? How do we get home? Do we have to fight the traffic going home? It doesn't make sense because there's no light on Jackson Mill, so you have traffic going back and forth. There are times when it's under construction over tree force, we have backup on Strickland where it takes six lights before we can even make that turn because they don't make it a left turn signal only. So, we have to fight the oncoming traffic from Wyckoff in order for us to make our left turn. So, that doesn't even make sense. It's bad enough now, now you want to increase more traffic into that neighborhood where we have a 7-11 that already has six pumps on both sides, which will give you 12 cars. So, is it necessary? Is gas that cheap? I'm sorry, I don't see that. And they have an EV station there too. So, why do I need one on each corner? Yes, it's profitable for you, but it's going to disrupt all our lives. Number one, I'm going to get noise pollution. You're going to have your recycle truck coming through, you're going to have your gas, gasoline truck coming through, you're going to have your gas pickup, you're going to have your food delivery. Do I not, am I not entitled to a life? I'm, I'm sorry. You don't live in this neighborhood. I lived there since Longbrook, been there. I am the first person that signed a contract to live there. I've been there for over 30 years. There has been gas station right next to Woolley that closed out with BP Gas, okay? There's no homes there. Why can't you use that? They had to dig it all up just to get the tanks out. So, now you're telling me you're going to dig up the land to put more tanks in? If something goes wrong, you have to dig it up again. You're, you're ruining our neighborhood. I'm sorry, I've been here for so long that I don't want to have my life disrupted in any way that way. It's bad enough as is. I was a commuter, I used to take the bus, I get on it all, I have to run across the street. When they, when they fixed the, the roadway, they put up the fence so no one could cut in between because too many people got hit by buses and cars and trucks that's running through. In the evening, when there's a big truck that runs on Route 9, guess what? I hear it because my bedroom's facing Route 9. And that's only trucks on Route 9, that's not even on your, not even on the PNC Bank property. You know how close that is to all our homes? Take a look at the picture, see how close that is. It's, it's actually not healthy for any of us and it's more dangerous. And then you guys don't, can take into consideration, Strickland is a school bus street.
Okay? You cannot see that because you don't live here.
I do. That's a school bus street because they pick up kids and they drop off kids on Route 9 for the high school, for the middle school, and the elementary school. So, you guys did not take that into consideration just because you don't see it. I don't care what time you come, but you don't come during school time. We get hit with it. I have no problem with you trying to make a business, but pick something else that is not repetitive, that's so competitive with your, with 7-11. Everyone's entitled to make a living, true, but not at our expense. You're, you're taking the quality of life from us, from all of us. We have old, we have young, we have sick. How are we competing with all that? I have to take my husband to multiple doctors, okay? Unfortunately, I don't like to, but I am not going to fight traffic and make him get up an hour early just so I could get him to his appointment. I feel bad. He has a permanent disability that unfortunately I can't do anything about. I don't know, I, I don't know what else to say, but I do not feel that we need to have another gas station. You want to, Quick Check has a pharmacy, open the pharmacy. You can open a pharmacy. I'm sure you have enough people in that area that can utilize a pharmacy, so why don't you? If that's the case. But gas station, I do not approve. Number one, it's not good for my environment around my area.
Just so you know, I'm not ignoring you or responding to you.
I know.
At some point, we're going to respond to all these comments.
I understand.
Yeah, and I do, and I, I want to hear from other people too.
I'm just, I understand.
I'm not listening to you, but I just want to be fair to your other neighbors if you want to speak.
Yes, I will let them speak their piece too, but I do represent a whole group of them also that cannot attend.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Good evening, Board.
Good evening, let's get you sworn in.
My name is John DiRanzo.
Do you swear from the testimony you're about to give? This matters the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay, spell your last name, please.
DiRanzo, D-I, capital R-I, E-N-Z-O.
And your address?
We are at 2 Strickland Road.
Thank you.
Okay, it was under Brenda Weaver. Okay?
Thank you very much, go ahead.
All right, thank you for giving me this opportunity to bring some of my concerns to the zoning board. As everybody knows, I'm going to lose some property value on right on Strickland Road, right next to.
Sir, you speaking to the mic?
Right next to the, the westbound entrance. It's a standalone house, it's where the pine trees are. I'm going to lose at least 30% of my property value because the gas station's going to go in next door. I've got so many environmental concerns that I can't, I can't even list them all. There's going to be spills from the pump, there's going to be deodorers, there's going to be the tank installation and the risk of leakage, just hundreds of feet from my property. I've got a granddaughter that's a month and a half old. Some of the toxins found in gasoline have proven to contribute to childhood leukemia. The pollution in itself with the additional cars coming in and out. The catch basin, I've got a big issue with this. I don't want mosquitoes in, in my yard, catch basin's going right next to my property. Here's a, here's a big one, guys. The safety of the pedestrians. Everybody, everybody knows that we've had a few deaths at that intersection. It's a dangerous intersection, guys. If something causes a problem, it's a problem. Not much has been mentioned about the amount of commuters that get off the bus, hike up to PNC Bank parking area, and they're picked up by their loved ones. They're taken home to Strickland Farms, Moore's Landing, Field Crest, and we're down Jackson Mills Road. There's a lot of drop-offs there and pickups. The turning left onto Route 9 North is, is a debacle. Good luck with you guys. It's a problem right now, it's not going to get any better with the gas station, I'll tell you that. It's, it's, on certain times of the day, weekends, it does. It takes you three or four lights to get through the light, just to head up Route 9 North, just to do some errands. The safety of pedestrians and the commuters is a major concern of mine. There was a woman that was killed at that corner. Few years back, a woman who was traveling 89 miles an hour down Route 9 South and T-boned her and killed her. I was on my hands and knees, holding her hand and saying prayers with her. I don't want to relive that again. It's horrible. The light pollution, I don't care how many, how many amps you bring it down, if I look at my, if I sit on my back deck, I'm not going to be able to see the stars. I mean, it's, it's, it's an issue, it is, it's a quality of life issue. The additional traffic, the additional noise, the additional foot traffic is a concern. We've got kids that ride their bikes all in throughout the parking lot, up and down the sidewalks. The human health concerns, you know, again, there's, there's got to be some sort of quality of life for them. So, I've got a lot of negatives, I strongly oppose this. I hope the zoning board really thinks about it, you know? I don't want to see any more deaths at the corner, all right? That's, that's pretty much it. I, those are, I want to hit the bullets. I'm sure I'll be here for the next zoning board meeting, but I appreciate your, giving me some time tonight, thank you.
Yeah, you're, you're welcome, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Name, address?
Marie Calderon. I live at Moore, in Moore's Landing, which hasn't been addressed here tonight.
And let's get you sworn in.
You're sworn in.
Oh, yeah.
Do you swear from the testimony you're about to give? Is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Can you just spell your last name, please?
C-A-L-D-E-R-O-N.
What's your address?
45 Marion's Cove, Freehold, New Jersey.
Marion's Cove?
Marion's, M-A-R-I-N. Sorry, my, okay, a lot of things here have not been addressed. Not concerned with the building or the bushes or the lighting. This is a disaster and you know it. I'm there 39 years, it's been ongoing. Any changes are going to make it worse. The putting of the gas station that was there was okay, that mom and pop that was there, and they had a little convenience store. The 7-11 is becoming a nightmare because when you put in the commuter park and ride there, you opened a can of worms. That corner, we call it a bowling alley. Who has to juggle around people because they cut regardless of you putting the fence, thinking that's going to solve the problem? They're still cutting through. You got some, I have pictures of that. Then, at 3 o'clock in the afternoon, that road there, you can't, we wait for the longest time to turn onto our roadway. It goes up to, you know where the Waycar Building is? It goes up to that, I have pictures of that. We've had numerous death stairs, not including accidents, crosses all over, that's all you have. By adding this, you would be opening a can of worms. Not to say that when we moved into Moore's Landing, basically, it's a commuter, we walk, all of us walk to take the bus. It's not a, and none of us drive. Half of the people don't even have cars. You have Section 8, children, thousands of children, the buses, you're not even taking into consideration the buses. And then another thing, as you know, I went to the Howell Township Police Department today and they're worried about it. They actually have a report. Maybe you can make changes, but they don't know if that can do anything. The DOT made no decision because they know it's a nightmare. I've called them, I only found out about it. Moore's Landing has not been notified. We have about 380 homes, most of them filled with kids. Now, where they're proposing, right across the street, where two, where about 200 and something feet is where our buses come in and out and the kids all ride their bikes on those roads. You've got to be kidding me to allow something like this. Now, if you go further up, not even before the next light, there's property there for sale that you can go in and out with no problem, even further up by where the ice cream place used to be. Why feel the need to do something like this? Moore's Landing was notified, the association, but in transition, we're going through a process where we've had three and they're out, they didn't notify the residents. I just got back this weekend from Disney World and I got somebody who founded, knows I live in by Strickland Road, and they notified me because they got it on Facebook. I don't do Facebook. When I retire, I won't go on a computer. But, I'm telling you, I have pictures of today because the weekend, you can't do nothing, everybody, it's like the world ends, you know? But I have pictures. But I have pictures of a backup at 3 o'clock with the buses. That's without school buses, that's... And then I have people running through, and then you didn't even address, where's the traffic guy? He didn't even address the circle that goes into there. What, is he crazy? We barely have two lanes. And that circle, they barely have enough room. If we turn, they're almost hitting us. And that's where they're proposing their, this is a nightmare. And how you're even, I am on the phone with DOT. I'm calling HUD because, like I said, this is full of kids, and you're opening a can of worms here. You're here to protect Howell and the residents. You're not here to just say, oh, the building, the shrubbery. Who cares if our kids are going to get killed? We need somebody that's going to look after us and really look into there. The traffic padding is a nightmare. I'm there 39 years. It's not changed. But this will surely worsen it. They keep referencing the Wawa. There's nothing over there. Those houses are there. The gas station that's across from us, they have a road, so they have an inlet. If we want gas, we can go through that, come around back, and come over Route 9. So the gas station is not needed. We're not opposed to a building. It has to be. Somebody owns the property naturally. And it's not about one person, I'm sorry to say for people that are speaking. It's about the whole. You have silvermeat there, the seniors. You have deerbrook, do you know how big deerbrook is? They mostly use Strickland Road. You have heathermeat. You have Moore's Landing. The nerve to talk about one, five houses when you have all those developments on that road? Have you ever gone there? The buses can't even go down there sometimes. So to even think of allowing this is a nightmare. I'm sorry, but you really need to look at this. And I will do what I can to call the DOT. And did you find a police report at least? They were supposed to send it over. I was there. I'm trying to do, I watched my grandchildren since I retired, so I'm running around trying to do this. But you should have some of the legwork, too. It's not just hearing about shrubbery. Oh, and not even that, about basins. Howell's track record on basins, catch bakes, and what, are they sewer? Are they rainwater? Where's the storm management reports? There's a lot more to this, and I demand that you look into it and not approve this, especially the use variance. If you want to put a store there, no objection, but a gas station, not needed. And like I said, if you go up Howell, there's two properties that would be excellent for it. So please think of Howell residents. And I'm sorry, that goes for all of you. But thank you for serving on it, but that's how I feel.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to make it clear for the record that the, you know, the, the board does send copies of the application to the police and the fire and to all the different departments in the township.
They did, yes.
And we did not, we did double check this morning. We did not receive anything from the police. We will, of course, we will, of course, after tonight, go back and make sure that there wasn't something that we missed.
Yeah, I would like to see.
And we have another hearing, but yeah.
Would you like copies of these pictures, or did you, even any of you go to the site to see what it's like, especially at 3 o'clock with the kids? I mean, it's, this is, should be a no-brainer. No.
Okay. We're not picking you up on the mic anymore.
Yeah.
So, Mr. Chair, I just want to add two comments to that, too. So you've, you've already heard two public comments regarding some questions regarding the stormwater management and, you know, standing water and mosquitoes and things like that, you know? It, it sounds like we're not going to unravel tonight. I would definitely recommend the applicant address those before they come back to the board to, you know, any of the outstanding stormwater comments in my letter, there was an exhibit regarding an expand, an additional basin, that that be, you know, furthered when they, before they come back. And then regarding the noticing and everything like that, so they do have a 200-foot radius map on their plan, and it does show, uh, Moore's Landing. I think this is just a weird instance where the 200-foot radius covers onto the open space lot or the homeowners association lot over there. So I don't know that they were necessarily required to notify every individual property owner. They did notice the lot, which is the homeowners association that was within 200 feet. So I don't want it to look like, you know, it was something intentionally done or not done by the app. I just wanted to provide that clarity.
Okay. Before we go any further, can I just get a show of any residents who would still like to speak? Okay?
My name is Vijaya Kesri, 14, Field Crestway, Freehold, New Jersey, zip code 07728. My husband, Dwarika Kesri, is sitting there.
Hang on. Ma'am, let's get you sworn in. Let's get you sworn in. Do you swear from the testimony about to give us the matters of truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Do you swear that you're going to tell the truth when you're speaking this evening? Do you swear that you're going to tell the truth to this board while you're speaking here this evening?
Hard of hearing.
Yes.
Yeah, I can't hear. Actually, I have a hard of...
Are you going to tell the truth?
Yeah, I'm telling the truth.
Okay.
Yeah.
Hard of hearing, sorry.
Spell your name. Spell your name.
V-I-J-A-Y-A, last name Kesri, K-E-S-H-A-R-I. My husband is Dwarika Kesri. We got a letter last Monday...
And you're 14 Field Crest, correct?
From the Field Crestway, Freehold, New Jersey. I think I dropped the letter in the afternoon to the, for the, maybe you can read it beforehand, but that's the just general letter. But I, my concerns, I didn't write the concerns. So my house is, what, the number, block 141, lot 38, 14 Field Crestway, is just across me is, I, I can't see from here, is... Yeah, me, it's from my, I can see like this, the background. It, I used to see PNC Banks and all, I will see the...
Were you noticed? Did you receive a notice with, because you're within 200?
I received the notice from the attorney on Monday. Yeah, I did.
Okay.
Yes. So first, this is the very dangerous traffic line, traffic. Stickland commuting by bus, 5:00 in the morning, cross from Stickland and just what other people are saying, my neighbors are saying, from Stickland, Moore's Landing, and villages, everyone has a family, they go to New York, whether crossing by walking or by car. It's very dangerous. Coming from 9 to Stickland, that's also difficult. And from south, it has to go, it can turn, take a turn, then take it. So it's very dangerous traffic. So the first point is this. I wrote it down, all the points. And there was an accident in January 2013. I remember January, it was 13th January. A girl, 26-year young lady was killed. The, means, I remember because I turned, I came to the same time as, in front of my, me, the accident was happened, the road was closed, and the police was there overnight until next morning. Means that accident, I cannot, never forget. This bus trough crossing and the lights are there, and there is the same question I have is 7-Eleven is already across the street, so why do we need another bus, a gas station? And it will impact all neighborhood and soil contamination, health hazard, pollution, gas smell, peace of our life. And when the gas tanker fills the gas to the station, it will pollute our soil and which will be leaked to our backyard. Because I remember there was a, another ba, station, gas station next to Woolies that has to be taken out. So the same thing happened with two of our neighborhood. So we'll get the gas leak, we don't know, in the future. And another thing, I read yesterday, the NJSA 44 does 55D dash 70D1. This is the, what, variance can be approved only in special circumstances, not for the business. It's either helping public, maybe library, bank, or help, help something. It's not for the business purposes, so it should not be approved. Means to my, me, it's to my concern. And, and I lived there for 21 years, so I see all these changes. My other neighbors are saying the same thing. I will repeat it. So it's same concern. I have this and this. It's Wyckoff Mill, Route 9, Stickland, and this, all the Route 9 public crossing. So these are very much concerned. This is gas station coming across the street, across our backyard. My, two of my neighbors, Stickland, me, Field Crest, 16, she left, 28, she left because it was getting late. So all of us are concerned. So please take our consideration before approving. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can my wife speak for me? Because I have 18 years old.
Yes.
Thank you.
Give your, oh, give your name and address?
Yes. Give your...
Audrey Calderon, 45 Marins Cove, Freehold, New Jersey, 07728.
Okay. And your wife's going to speak for you?
He just, he just thought of two things. One is, um, the watershed that's back there. Has the DEP been approached as far as that? I don't think it's more, it's 500 feet away. That runs through all the back of our properties. What if you have a, a leak in the soil in any way? That could be a potential. I know...
Let's address that now, Charlie.
I know in the past...
Excuse me.
So, um, I can tell you, I don't believe that that stream is within 300 feet. It's like...
I think it's 500.
It's over 500 feet? Yeah, so DEP only regulates if it's a category one water, there's a 300-foot corridor associated with that. If it's not, then it would typically be 150-foot riparian. It would seem like they're well outside of that.
I think I call them. I'll have to get my information straight. I think it was 500 because that's actually the Manasquan Watership, and it runs behind the houses into the bay. So I will check on that. And also, what we're not aware is, my husband said, if you're down at Strickland, is Jackson Mills. Now, as we all know, nobody wants to go on Route 9. So you got it. The traffic from Jackson Mill all comes down Strickland. So you're adding thousands of cars. If you go there, um, Jackson, I mean, Freehold is aware of it. They put a light at the next stop there, they don't know what to do. Everybody comes through. You have people coming from Jackson, you have people coming from Route 9. All come down. As a matter of fact, police department uses that as a detour. Freehold Police and Howell, at least 10 times this year was a detour, and we couldn't even get out of our properties. So there's a lot you got to look into. But that's what my husband just thought of and forgot that I forgot to say. So please look into this. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, we have a 10 o'clock, pretty much Cotoop time. We're approaching that. We've listened to your concerns. Matt, I may ask you this question because you might be the best. Is it something that we can get a police report? Because I think we would...
I'll follow up them first thing in the morning. If we have it, then we'll send it out.
Because I think in this, in this application, I think...
We'll touch base with them. If they have it and send it to us, we'll definitely send it to the board as well as the applicant.
Okay, and then share it with Sal. So you're looking two months, maybe, as far as...
I don't know when the next available, I'm not sure if Matt has that.
I do.
Real quick, Mr.... Yeah, yeah, hold on. Yeah, I just want to close public. I'll make a motion to close public and let the public know that, you know, the next meeting, you will get an opportunity again if you so choose. Do you have a second?
Second.
On favor? Aye. Aye.
Are we, are we looking two months out?
Yes.
So June 9th, June 23rd, that's too soon, is July 14th about what we're looking at?
Sal?
I'm looking for my team to see if they're saying no.
Uh, July, July 28th?
July 28th, guys? Okay.
There's one other application on, I don't think it's a, a very large one.
Okay, so we'll see what the application is on the 28th. If it's like a residential, just for a bulk variance, we'll let them go first, but otherwise. So is the 28th good?
Yes, so we'd...
So we extend the time for the board to make a decision through the end, through August?
That's fine.
Yeah. And we will need an expiration of time.
Right, we're going to extend it through the end of August, and then we're just going to request you make the announcement, no further notice.